I call the meeting to order and get the ball rolling. We've got a lot to cover tonight. Note attendance, Debbie.
I noted it.
First up, we have for discussion items, a presentation from a few superintendent search firms. We had reached out to several. Some of you came a long ways or are on Skype and et cetera. You know, 20 minutes may be okay. I don't want to, you know, an hour apiece would be here all night, right? So I want to try to be respectful of everybody's time as well. And, you know, do your best, I guess, to keep it as concise as is reasonable, if that makes sense. I also don't want to cut anybody off. If you have important information to share, we want to hear it as well. And first up, we have Hank Harris of Human Capital Enterprises on Skype. And I really appreciate you joining us tonight. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, no, thank you. It's quite an honor. Can you see me and hear me okay, everybody?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. I'll just say something. From where I am, actually, I have a couple of monitors and I see you more clearly when I look up, but then it probably looks like I'm looking at the sky. So if you do see me looking at the sky, I'm actually looking at you, but I'm going to try to keep my eyes aligned with you. Actually, it's really, it's exciting and it's an honor to be with you this evening. If you had a moment to listen to my proposal, I have a warm and very fond memories of serving in the Silver Falls School District. I was a young wannabe school administrator. I had just finished my administrative credential program. And Silver Falls, it was the summer of 1997, I believe. And there was an opening for assistant principals, a shared position between Mark Twain and Robert Frost. And I was very lucky and fortunate that your district took a chance on a young administrator who had no administrative experience, who had actually not only had no administrative experience, also had no elementary school experience. And I kind of thought I'd been gone to heaven when I landed the role as assistant principal of the junior school system. And I only served there one year. It was unfortunate timing in terms of budget. My position was laid off at the end of the year. And from there, I went on to have a career in some other school districts in the state of Oregon. But my memory and my gratitude to your school system remains to this day. And for many years, I knew folks, I think I still do know some folks who will work in the organization, but some of the folks who I had worked alongside with remain good friends for many years. So it's on that note that it's particularly exciting to be back with you and an honor to be sitting with the Silver Falls School Board. I am going to, while I like to say a little bit more about myself, go to switch on to, if this is successful, you'll see the presentation on the screen. You'll still hear me, but you'll not see me for a few minutes. Let's see if this works. And bear with me, this might take about 30 seconds and it might not work at all, but...
Well, we look like we're seeing your screen, so...
Do you still see me?
Well, we're seeing our cells reflected back.
Okay.
Hank, you need to go to your PowerPoint and then hit the... I don't already have it. Just go to your PowerPoint.
Open my PowerPoint and...
Present.
There's pictures on the screen that you see us on.
Thank you, Board, for starting up this. Okay, I'm going to try and drag the presentation in here and see what happens. What, I apologize, Board. What you see right now?
You.
Me. I wonder if in the interest of time, do you have the handouts of the slides?
Yes.
Yes.
Could I walk you through them and then, if you have them, then you'll look at the pages rather than, and then I think you still see me, right?
Yeah.
And only me, or do you see my whole desktop as well?
No, just you.
Okay. All right, so let's do that. So, okay, just a little bit about me. I told you about the first year of my career. Let me just briefly walk you through. I served as an assistant principal, of course, in your school district and then I went on to Weston-Wilconville. I was a principal in Southern California and then moved back to Oregon to serve as an HR director, not too far away from Silverton and Candy. So remaining part of my K-12 Oregon and also Washington State career was as HR director for the Candy Schools, executive director of Human Resources for Portland Public. And after that, I actually opened up my consulting practice, as it were, and shortly thereafter consulted with the Bellingham Schools up in Bellingham, Washington. And in that time, I then became their executive director as part of a consultancy, but it was a long term, until I ultimately wore the title of executive director of HR for Bellingham. But for about eight years or so, I have supported school systems, many of them in Oregon and Washington, in their HR functions and operations. And sometimes that strategic work with HR, every HR director will tell you, there's not enough folks in the shops to get all the HR work done, and so sometimes school districts will call me for assistance. And a figure amount of it is what I call search, which is the work that we're doing tonight, which is to bring great leaders to school districts. Oftentimes, that's the superintendent as you're looking for. And I'm mindful of the critical importance of that work, perhaps the most important piece of work that a school board will take on. And getting that match right is essential to success with school districts. Having a process that surrounds getting it right is also essential to that process. And so what I want to commit to, if I am honored to serve the Silver Falls School Board in this way, is that we end up with not only a great superintendent, but a process that surrounds that that's also stellar. And it makes sense, right? You can bring in a great superintendent, you bring them in in a kind of a wonky funky way, or if the community doesn't feel involved, or if things get gnarly, you have a great leader and you can still not get off to the right star. And how you start your superintendent is very much going to be an indicator of success. If you look at the "Why Up" page, which should be, I think, the second page or the second slide in your folio, you'll see some kind of highlighted terms. And these are the principles that I really aspire to embrace when I work with you. A really high level of integrity and ethics in the process and a super high attention to detail. There's a lot of details that go around with a superintendent search. My goal is to make sure that you feel that this is a, again, not only bringing you the very best candidates that we can and me helping you think through who would be the best superintendent for Silverton and the surrounding areas, but that the process itself is really solid. My experience, my history is that I think I've been able to meet those goals and I encourage you after tonight, as you make phone calls to clients of all the folks that you're meeting with tonight, that you ask about process as well as product. Not only did you find the right person, but was it an experience that was good for you, that was good for your community, and importantly, that also brought your board together. This is an important moment in your district history and this is important work that you're undertaking. And if we're successful, and we will be successful, it will be an important moment in you and your board development, be a even stronger, even better board than you are or AR. The next slides are kind of the "How We Do It" slides. And I will tell you that you will probably see a lot of overlap in the actual "How We Do It" among consultants. I would imagine that we're all going to come in and spend some time in Silverton and in the surrounding areas. It was fun for me to reacquaint myself with Silverton. It's been a while since I spent time there, so I would be looking forward to coming back, doing a deep dive, meeting key stakeholders, meeting students, meeting families, having quality time, one-on-one time with each of you board members, to find out and to learn where we are in Silverton in this period of time and what is the profile of the candidate that will demonstrate, that will be smashingly successful for your school district. What might differentiate, so let's actually, let's do this. Let's go to the slide that says... Let me, so there's four "How We Do It" slides. There's the select phase, there's the recruit phase, no, I'm sorry. It'll be easier if I had it on the screen. There's the engage phase, which is what I just began to describe, where we get to know each other and really learn about your district. There's the recruit phase, and I do want to just speak to this slide for a moment, that, you know, we're all going to be out there and trying to find the right candidate. I think there's a couple of things that I would say about the hard work of recruiting. So one is, one is that, you know, a lot of school districts, if you're not putting, if you're not looking for a superintendent, if you're looking for a teacher, if you're looking for a principal, you do something that I like to call, I heard it once called "post and pray," and I adopted that terminology. And the post and pray method of HR is that you post a job and you pray that good people will apply. And we do that a lot in our school systems, just because we have lack of bandwidth to actually actively recruit. But in a superintendent search, of course, you can't, you can't rest on your laurels and post the job and hope that well, people will apply. And so the ability to recruit is an art. And it's an art that has to do with knowing the right questions and knowing the right people and knowing the right networks to engage. I am really proud of the fact that I've spent most of my career in the state of Oregon, a lot of it in the area within an hour's drive of where you are, but I've also spent considerable time around the region or around the country. I've spent time working both in Washington State and in California. I served on the governing board of the American Association of School Personnel Administrators. I was their executive director. And my network now, I spent some of the year in Washington DC. And I've also worked on some major national searches, including Houston, Portland, Prince George's County, which is right outside of Washington DC. And through that, I'm, I believe that I've been able to create a network, not that I necessarily know the person that's going to be the next superintendent of Silver Falls, although maybe I do, but I know folks who know folks who know folks. And that's the actual critical work of the recruiter, to engage those folks and to call folks, the folks who are going to answer his phone call and say, there is this amazing community called Silverton, Oregon, and here is what they're looking for, and who do you know that will be the right fit and ready for this role. Let's move to the next page, which is the select phase. My role in selection is this, or my role is to help you make the best decision you can possibly make. I have no vested interest in any particular candidate. My job is to bring you as top candidate, because I've recruited and because I have vetted. And when we meet and you decide who you want to invite in for your interviews, I'm going to be really honest with you about what I've heard, what I've learned, what I think. And then it's your decision, not mine, it's your decision about who you want to bring forward and interview. Typically, in the selection phase, typically you'll go through two rounds of interviews. We can talk in more detail after that, if you'd like to, what those rounds might look like. But typically, we bring candidates first and then we whittle it down and we bring candidates back a second time. And the end of that second set of interviews is when, you know, we begin the end game. And by that time, you have a pretty good sense of who it is that you want. There's transition work to be done. I'll hold your hand through it to the extent that you want me to in terms of contract negotiation, which you selected. Obviously, if we're going to do significant background checks, you might choose to do a site visit. If you look at the proposed calendar, which is Slide 7, I don't know if it's numbered on yours, but it might be, you can count down there. The proposed calendar is maybe what you expected to be, but also further in your packet, you don't need to go there unless you want to right now. I outlined what I think might be with some actual dates, what it would look like for a search for Silver Falls. And you see that we begin as early as October, November. If you decide that you'd like to work and partner with me and my firm, I'd like to come out and meet with you very shortly, either later, either in October or certainly by early November. And there's a lot of work to be done on my end in terms of the recruiting and then on your end in terms of selection phase, January, February. But I think we can have a superintendent name in Silverton by early March. And you are wise to have gotten a really early start. I'm going to just let you sit through, if you want, the last few slides. I write a little bit about some of the clients I've worked with, the local and the national reach, and some of the quotes, if you care to read about some of the quotes, it's always nice when people say nice things about you. One of the quotes in there actually is from a candidate who didn't get a job. And I always think about that. He wrote me a really, really, I was deeply appreciative and touched by the note he wrote. He didn't get the job, he applied to be superintendent of Portland. But his note said to me, you know, he made me feel like I was the only candidate in the search region, and I know I wasn't. And he walked away with a really tremendous feeling about that school district. And that is also, I think, part of the work that you want with your recruiter, is that this needs to be a great process, not only for the board and not only for the community, but actually, this is part of your brand and your reputation and how people, only one person who applies is actually going to be your next superintendent. And to all those other folks who apply that don't become your next superintendent, you want them to walk away with an incredibly positive sense of Silverton and Silver Falls so that they can be part of your, you know, when they hear about a job opener, somebody says, hey, do you know anything about Silver Falls, they might say, you know what, I applied for a job there, I didn't get it, but that is an amazing community, and you would do well to apply there. So I'll leave you there and then you might have some questions that you would like to ask of me.
Hank, I have a question. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Hi. So you list a bunch of districts, Oregon districts, that you've worked with. Have you done superintendent searches for all of those districts?
No, no, thank you. Let me pull that slide up. So in, actually, if you look in the proposal, which I know there's a lot of paper on your desk, so I apologize for that. On the proposal, which was submitted a week or so ago, I actually do list the districts I worked with and then I highlight in bold those where there was a superintendent or assistant superintendent. Do you have that handy?
Yes, and I have read it. Thank you very much for...
Okay, so that might be more helpful than the slide to tell you where the suit searches were, or deputy suit searches.
So I have a question for you.
Yes.
If we were to hire your firm, would we be working solely with you in this area? Or would you be, do you have other employees that are in this area and you're in Washington DC?
Great question. It's me, I'm your guy.
Okay.
And I'm intentional about that. Now, you might, so when I come in and we do focus groups, that sort of deep dive in Silverton, I may very well bring an associate who helps me.
Right.
And also, at the second round interview, sometimes, depending on how you'd like to create it, it can be logistically very multifaceted. And so I might bring an associate. I will never have, unless I, you know, fall off a mountain, you're not going to have somebody in lieu of me. You might have a junior member working with me.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
I have a question. Your proposal talks about engaging with stakeholders prior to fielding the candidates, to just get their sense of what their desired characteristics are. What about that engagement, though, after the semifinalists or finalists have been identified? Do you generally support stakeholders engaging at that point in the process?
I support what the board decides, and that's a really important decision that the board will have to make, is to what extent you want to engage your stakeholders at that part of the process. And what we'll do, and we'll actually do this in our first meeting together, I'll walk you through the advantages and disadvantages of that. In a nutshell, and maybe obviously so, in a nutshell, communities tend to, this is not going to surprise you, communities love to be part of that selection, whether it's a meet and greet or whether there's a stakeholder group. And at the same time, the more open that process is, the more skittish some sitting superintendents are about wanting to throw their names in, right? And we all have seen articles like, here's the four finalists for X, Y, Z district. Folks who are not yet superintendents, oftentimes are very happy to be part of that. Folks who are sitting superintendents, who have established very good relationships with their board, they're less excited to have their names publicized, that they're looking for a new job. So I've done it both ways and it's really, it's a board decision about where you want to fall on that and what the highest priority is. And I can absolutely support both ways and both ways can be very productive.
Okay. Thank you.
On the financial side, you lay out the flat sort of fee that goes with it along with, you know, you talk about the additional items that we would have to consider. And I'm curious if you have sort of a general sense of what the total ends up being. I mean, I could guess, but I don't have the experience you do regarding how much expenses add up.
Yeah, sure. No, I see that. Just let me just scroll through that so I can talk to you about that. So the other, bear with me one second, I just want to move this off the screen to a different screen and then I can look back at you. Okay, so here are your key other, here are your other components. Advertising is an important part. So I want to short change that. I would say that actually about 60% of the time, the person ultimately hired is through a direct reach out from me. And maybe 40% of the time, they're self-selected through advertising. So we don't want to eliminate the advertising fees. And in conjunction, if I can just take a very quick bird walk, because I haven't mentioned yet my relationship with HYA, which is a national superintendent search association. So if you read my proposal, you would have seen me speak to HYA and if you haven't, if whatever, if you were not able to see that, you're receiving both myself, Human Capital Enterprises, which is very much a regional-based firm, and you're also receiving HYA, which is Hazardia Mateo, which is a national superintendent search firm, and we co-brand. And the reason I bring that up at this point is there are a couple of products in the ancillary fees that HYA makes available at a, that it could cost you if you choose. So one of those is advertising packages. If you want to just go out and do your own advertising, if you say, you know what, we're really looking regionally, Oregon, Washington, then, you know, we can talk you through that and that can be, you know, several hundred dollars or even less. If you want to at least appeal to a national audience, HYA has some advertising packages. Let's just arguably say you go with an HYA package of about $1,700. So that would be one of your fees. Another one of your fees, strongly recommended, is that you want to engage and do a full background search on either, on either your finalist or your finalist. And I will say that in the last year or so, most districts I'm working with are, and they're not cheap, so you have to think about that. They run between $1,200 and $1,900 per background. It used to be that districts would kind of do that on their finalist, and I'm now saying that most districts are doing it on their finalist multiple, right? So you've got three people coming back for a second round interview and you're actually doing the backward check on all three of them so that you don't end up with a person that you like and then you find out they're not the person that you want. Those will run, as I say, between $1,200 and $1,900 per person, depending on what modules you want. So, and, you know, whether that's one person or two people or three people, that's the board's decision. The only other costs really are travel costs. So I am based on the West Coast, starting in November, so I'm a lot closer to you. And then, so that's whatever it is. I will be there 10 and a half days and I think usually it runs, the travel, I'm going to say it runs somewhere between $4,000 and $5,000. And then, and then, and important to that is if we can get the dates calendared ahead of time, then flights are cheaper, so it can be kind of at the lower end of that. And then also, optional but recommended, is you're going to bring candidates in for interviews. And some of those candidates may very well be from outside of Oregon, or they may be outside of a thriving zone and they might need to fly there. And so while it's optional, it's strongly encouraged that you would want to compensate candidates for their travel expense to Silverton. So those will be some decisions that you'll make at your, at our opening planning meetings. And, you know, we can contain budget as much as you need to in terms of these ancillary costs. So all of those, all of those are potential, you know, we can limit any, anything that I just raised in those ancillary categories can be limited.
Thank you, that helped a lot.
Yes.
Anybody else have any further questions for Hank?
I don't. I don't like that.
We're good.
Yeah.
All right. We really appreciate your time and presentation. We've, you know, got a chance to look through it. We're not making any decisions tonight, we're just gathering information, so.
Great, great. It's been great to be with you. I wish you best of luck with tonight and with the transition over the next year.
Thank you very much for staying here. Yes.
Have a good night.
Have a great evening, too.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Hank. You gonna hang up now? Want to give it to him?
Yeah.
Very happily zoned.
I met you as well.
Yes. He's the cutest puppy.
So shut... Daylight.
There you go. There you go. Nice.
Doubles the suntan.
Thank you.
Jennifer?
Yeah, I might need some SPF in here.
And Janet?
Oh.
There you go. Do you guys have our proposal? I think it was said. So you do have it, you have, all right. Urban?
He's on the phone today. So we'll set it right next to the phone.
Hey, Urban, how are you?
I'm feeling really good. How are you?
Good. Lori?
Okay. Thank you.
Tom?
There you go.
Jonathan?
I like that. Oregon, they have seven-person boards and Washington, we only have five.
No. Oh.
Except for, I think Seattle is the only one that has a seven.
I think there's five-person boards in Oregon.
Yeah, there is. Yeah. Because we did Springfield. And they were, they were a five-person. And actually, Bend was five-person. Actually.
Okay.
Huh?
Yeah.
How do you decide? Five, five-seven decide?
It was decided well before we got here.
And I saw your school districts started in 1849, so.
Yeah.
So, thank you very much for inviting. McPherson and Jacobson, here to present to you. My name is Rich Parker and I've been with the firm for, since 2011. I've done, actually, searches around the country, but mainly it's been Washington, probably the majority, but I've done the Reynolds District and Bend and Springfield. And I didn't, I think we did North Bend last year and I wasn't part of that search. So I've done some Oregon searches and did one up in Alaska, Albe, Alaska. So I average usually do about six to eight searches each year since about 2011, so you can do the math and figure that out. Given 20 minutes that we have, I think I'm just going to focus on, since you had the proposal, I had a chance to look at the whole thing, I'm going to actually focus on the first, kind of like, I think, six pages. Yeah, up until the Phase 1. So, yeah, our little tagline is, it's all about the kids, but everybody says that, right? Each stakeholder group is all about the kids. But, you know, truly, it is. I'll tell you a little bit about my background. I started as a teacher and then actually got an opportunity to, I became a flight instructor. And I was on the East Coast, Connecticut, got an opportunity to run a flight school out in Colorado, so I did that. Then I was doing some stuff up in Alaska with aviation and that kind of didn't pan out and I decided to leave aviation. And on the way back, stopped into Seattle and said, you know, I miss the water and this has mountains, too, and I stayed there. So I basically developed, it was right at the time when the internet was growing and I developed a software company with another gentleman. We did that for about 15 years. But during that time, I became school board director. I really wanted to get back to education. And actually, our software had, is an educational product. And so I became a school board director. And you know that it's all about the kids, right? Everyone always says that. But truly, I found that school board members, we're here for you, you get elected, and yes, some people do have certain agendas, whether financial or whatever. But for most of us, it's really just to do something good and really to improve education, right? And we went through, I was on the board for eight years, three years I was board chair, and during that eight years, we went through three superintendent searches and actually used three separate firms. McPherson-Jacobson was the last one. And they actually offered me a job when they got done and that's why I left, being a school board director. But what I found was, you know, they say that this is the most important, I don't believe, I think it's one of the most important things that a school board does, but it really is critically important and it is about the kids. Because if the relationship between you and the superintendent gets dysfunctional, it really filters down and that really does affect, goes from the boardroom to the classroom. And that kind of dysfunction that you have at that level. Now, I know you have, the gentleman before you're, who's the superintendent before him?
Belenda? Andy Belenda?
Yeah, Andy. Yeah, he was here for nine years, but he was 30 years in the district. So that's really good. Actually, seven to nine years, or seven to 10 years is what we call the sweet spot of being a superintendent and you have that. But when you run a board for eight years and you go through three superintendents, it's a lot of, you know, disruption. And your work is not focused. Okay? So that I learned is number one. And so I realized that really, the work of the board to get a And so I realized that really, the work of the board to get a good match between that superintendent and the board, and the direction of the district, is critical. Okay? So if you look at just the next page four, so we are a leading firm. We're one of three. So now, I'd have heard Hank say HYA. Hazard Young Matia is the other national firm, and then Rand Associates is the third. So we're the three national firms do probably lion's share of searches nationally. One of the things that, that gives you an advantage is, it is in the advertising. Most people who are going to be looking for the jobs, they actually go to the three firms first. Since we do most of the searches, we have most of them posted. And actually, our online application software has a little graph that we can print out from every search, and it tells where that person was referred to, or where they came from to actually apply. And the, the majority is actually the sites, and then AASA and your School Board Association are usually in the second tier. So those are, you know, usually where people are here. We get about, on the average, this last year, last couple of years, we can get in between thirty and thirty-five applicants per position. And that's for districts, I've done districts of six hundred students to fifteen thousand students. And that generally, that's the, you know, the six hundred students who choose, you know, twenty-five to twenty-eight. So I think, again, that, us being a national firm, and that having it out on the, on our website, and also, there are people who register through our website to actually get notifications from any, so, and that's literally probably three or four thousand. So every position, once we develop this brochure, it's sent out to every single person in our database. So we have a hundred and twenty-five consultants through, I think it's now almost forty states, or it is forty states now. And that's important, because not all of, let us superintendent search firms use just former superintendents. And we have always decided to use a variety of people. So we have university professors, we have superintendents, we have people who are involved in the state education systems, as in school board members. In fact, in Louisiana, I don't know why, but almost all, there's eight consultants in Louisiana, and they're all former school board members. And that's, probably the culture of Louisiana, there's a bigger trust between school board members and school boards than there is. So I, I think it's important, because we've, we often, you can ask anyone who's, you know, the superintendents, that they have a certain perspective, even on a district, what they think the district needs, you know, direction needs to go, or skill set of a person, and how they fit. And I, as a school board member, sometimes have a different one, based on my kind of interpretation of the community, because we spend a lot of time with the community researching. I saw in your two thousand eighteen, your strategic plan, you had that little forum where like two hundred people participated, and you had those four questions. It's like a mini SWOT analysis. We do the same thing. We'll come in and meet for two days with a whole bunch of stakeholders, parents, community members, teachers, administrators, so on down the line. And then we ask them four questions, and they're almost the same, you know? What's great about this community? Why do people like to live here? What's great about this school district? And that's the positive things, what are the strengths? Then the challenges are, you know, what are some of the things that this district or a new superintendent administration would need to focus on in the near future? Okay? So we do go and we develop that, what's called key stakeholder report. So, so let's just now go back to the third item there, the leadership, sustainability and leadership. We really do have a great track record. And as I said, that generally, a superintendent wants to be in a position, and a board wants a superintendent for usually five to seven years. And that's, that's, that's pretty good. If you have someone for five to seven years, it's great. They don't necessarily need to come in and buy a cemetery plot. That's actually bad. Because the district is constantly improving and changing, and has, and you may, and you probably will, outlive the skill set of that person you bring in. So that as you have new challenges, you need a new type of leader. And the great thing is, is that seven to ten years, that's perfect. So that's what, you know, that's what we want to shoot for, someone who has the goals, really looking to come and commit to the, this community for seven to ten years. So if you look at over, you know, in the last five years, eighty percent of the people are still in the position. Over fifty are still in ten years. And I think almost half are fifteen years, but if you ask me, I think they should move on, but I don't make that call.
So you're, I want to make sure I didn't put it, fifty percent of the administrators are still in the position for which they were hired, meaning if they're hired as a superintendent, they're still superintendent?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Almost all, all of them, actually, Dana Diaz, who now is the superintendent in Reynolds, I hired her, I didn't hire, the board hired her, but I did for the San Juan, and she was in the El Paso school district. So I brought her from El Paso up to Friday Harbor in the San Juan Islands. And then she left there and went to Reynolds. I think there was maybe two others that retired, but everyone else in, since two thousand eleven, is still in their positions. Because the key is, for me, and it comes to coming in and sitting and working with the community, learning about, I've already started, you know, I downloaded, of course, I might go and look and see if there's a strategic plan that I could look at, so to prepare myself for tonight. But I also, that, that couple of days that we come here and stay in the community, that's really important, because then I'll get all of your OSPI student data. I mean, I think, when you read it, you're at ninety-one percent graduation rate now? See, that's, that's really good. Because I know it's like eighty-eight percent a couple of years ago, so you're making that progress. So I'll get all that demographic data. Now I really know this, this community, Silverton Falls community. Or the Silverton Fall, Silver Falls School District, Silverton, or, okay? All right. Sorry. So doing that, and really getting to know this community, the district, the teachers, the administrators, your needs, your strengths, really gives me a good handle on the kind of person that really should be leading the district. Then I go out, I do the recruiting, we go out and we, you know, advertise it. I do preliminary interviews, so call all of the applicants, ask them a set of questions that I've developed from those key stakeholder meetings, and the opportunity of working with you, the board. And then, and then, you know, it's really coming down to developing a group that I think are the best fit. And I can tell you why. There are often, we have people moving, a just gentleman from small district in Arizona just got hired in Blaine, Washington, which is right on the border up there, way on the top, and he just had this really great story. And if you hire me, I'll tell you the story later, but I've got lots of good stories of why people, because I asked, why do you want to move to Washington? Why would you want to come to Oregon? And find out what that story is, and sometimes they're really compelling and motivating, and that's the kind of thing I'm looking for. Not that I just retired out of California, and I want to move out of there, because we get a lot of, you know, those, and, and then I want to come up and play golf. You know, it's great they don't have a sales tax in Oregon, that's why I want to come here. Okay, so I heard Hank, really, this phase, process, the phase one through five, he had four, we have this, this five, which is just us running a kind of one-day workshop or half-day workshop with you, the board, and the new superintendent. And just make sure everyone's on the same page, the foundational blocks are there for interviews, performance objectives, just to make sure everyone, because we'll give you a guarantee of two years. So that if, for whatever reason, this doesn't work out, whatever reason, doesn't matter, it just, they, whether it was the wrong match, or the person's parents got sick in wherever they're from, and they had to leave, we will come back and do the search for free. So, expenses. That's it.
I, I should have attanked this, and I forgot to, but have you, have you had to honor that with any regularity? When you said eighty percent are still in a position, I'm assuming those didn't get honored, but, like, have you had to do that very often?
You know, no, I've never had to do the guarantee, no, no. No, in fact, there's some districts that I know the thing is so solid that I know it's going to last two years, and they're really trying to figure out, and they're pretty much have their process down. I'll tell them, just don't bother the phase five, it was, you know, you don't.
I've got a question, if you know, maybe kind of in your flow. So it's sort of a follow-up from something that I asked Hank. I think for our district right now, the process itself is very important. It's partly why we're interviewing candidates here.
Right, yeah.
There needs to be really good community engagement. I don't know personally what that looks like at this point, but it needs to be really good. So you do have a phase four, where you have candidates meeting with stakeholders. And I'm curious to know, how do you get around, a really good point that he brought up was, which is, you know, is that then going to limit our pool, because there are people who, for whom that's going to be difficult or impossible?
Well, let me just say that if you, you won't go to this executive summary page there, you just see that the one thing that Tom Jacobson and McPherson.
What page is it?
Page five. Five, there you go. Second bullet. They started this company back in the early nineties, and they were two, two professors from University of Nebraska. And they go, what's going to make us stand out? And they said transparency. Because there are firms, there are still firms, that bring people in through the back door, people don't know who it is, it's the, it's a closed process. And they said, our hallmark is going to be transparency. We're going to let everyone, and we have built on that. So I am a firm believer, actually, being a school board member, coming from that side, that this process should be totally transparent. We will keep the applications confidential until the shortlist, and then you have a decision at that point, if you want to do a semifinal round and interview five, you can do that in an executive session legally, and then that, the names still can be confidential. Or you can decide, like, they've had a number of districts recently have said, no, we want to do the semifinal with all five in an open session and have, so those names are then released, because you can't make a decision, so you can't select the five unless you're in an open meeting. I mean, it's a gray area whether you can select the three in closed session. All right? So I always side on this should be totally transparent. I think the stakeholders should be involved. I make it very clear to the stakeholders that they, we give them a form where they can, where they write what their strengths are, what the strengths in the applicant, and what concerns they have. And I've used this in two thousand eleven, and I've done it the same way, and it works really well. I emphasize to each group, do not rank, do not tell them who you like, because I said, you will put the board in a difficult position if the teachers say, I like this person, and the administrators say, I like this person. So that's not helpful, and will be disruptive to the process. And what the board really wants to hear is that, what are the strengths that you see in this person, and what concerns? From your key stakeholder position, because parents are going to have a different, and I think, so we usually have those out at even the semifinal, if it's open, and then the finals, and we collect the stack of those. And then you, that, you have that as part of data to then deliberate. And I think that's critical, because it gives you that outside perspective of what some of those other groups are thinking. It's still your decision, and we got to keep making that clear to everyone, that this is the board's decision, but they want to hear what you're saying. So that's, that's my.
So, following up on Janet's question, so have all of your, the searches you've run been open like that, where the public knows? I guess I'm, I'm looking for the perspective of the sitting superintendent who might not want to participate if their name's going to be all over the newspaper, because they don't want to break the relationship with their current board. So have all of your searches been open?
Well, if you're looking, so, first of all, if you're looking for a job, and you're already applying, you got to let people know at some point, right? So that's the, so normally, it's, we hold their names confidential until they're one of the three finalists, and everyone's comfortable usually with that. But they need to let me, they need to let their board know, and their senior cabinet administrators know, because I have to make calls to all those people to find out information. So they have to, and I say, if you can't make that commitment at this point, well, you're, you know, not even a semifinal, it's not even on my shortlist, then I can't keep you on the list. So I've had, and no one has ever said, no, you can't call. They go, yeah, all right, I'll call my board chair tomorrow morning. So that's that. As far as the, yeah, the norm is probably keeping it confidential through the semifinal round, and then the three finalists, and that's fine. But even since recently, last couple of years, people have been doing it in open session, I have not seen, I've seen some people actually say, you know, maybe I will pull my name out. But if they were really a good fit, and there was a good match, I don't think that that would be a problem, because I think they would, they would stay in. So that's, yeah, I don't.
Thanks for your perspective.
So are there any other?
Do you know, is there a list of the additional fees and expenses for the consultant to attend the interview session?
On the investment thing?
Yeah.
Yeah, let me, I think there's only twenty-something, isn't it? Twenty? Okay, so, so you're, so what they put here is that it won't exceed that amount, all right? But what is in the expenses between the first amount and the second amount is this thirty days of advertising on AASA, which I highly recommend. You will get for, in thirty days, you get a couple of days where you're the highlighted district, so whenever anybody goes to that section of AASA's website, the Silverton posting will come right up. And then top jobs as well. I can, I think that a district really this size, and this inside I have to come, I would put two days in there. That's included in the first fee, that's not an additional expense.
Okay.
Okay, so, and that would be two days, not one day. Now, what is an extra expense is the travel to the district. So the, you know, that, that would be extra. Do you have, Hispanic, I didn't get the breakdown of your demographics.
Yeah.
How many, what is the?
I don't know exactly, but we have a significant amount of.
Yeah, it's enough that we would want.
We would want to have.
Two surveys.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I, I would say we could, we would include two surveys, not one, and that would be included in the first fee. The video, see, we do a video, so when I get the, when I, so how it usually works is, we'll have thirty applicants. I will narrow that list down to probably somewhere around eighteen in the first cut. Then I try to get down to about twelve that are really, you know, really serious. Then I try to get down to about twelve that are really, you know, really seriously looking at. I'll ask them all to do an interview, a video interview, and it's ten minutes long. So it's three questions, three minutes for each question. And they do that, and then I look at that. You have, you can look at those if you want, but the, the firm charges fifty dollars per video. So, so Springfield, for example, decided they wanted to look at all of the shortlist. The shortlist, I want to bring you somewhere between, somewhere around seven names. You have access, if you want, to every single application. And we can even give that to you a couple of weeks beforehand. And another one of my, little pet peeves is that I always think it's important that the board have all the information in enough time for them to make an informed decision, not get the information right there at the board meeting and then say, right? So, so a couple of weeks ahead of time, you can get to see every single, and what they do is don't give you the whole application, it's usually just the cover letter and the resume, so that you can familiarize yourself with all thirty some applicants. But I'll show you a detailed presentation on somewhere between, somewhere around seven. So going back to the video interviews, you can look at the interviews if you want to kind of get another data point, but that does cost you fifty dollars. The background check, we do that full background check, and that's included in the, in the first fee. That's not an additional fee, that's included.
Now, if we wanted to do background checks on the final, say, three or five, that'd be an extra.
Yeah, and I would suggest you do the three.
Yeah.
And I do agree with what Hank is saying, you know, it's become awkward sometimes where I've only had two instances in all the years we've been doing this where, and it was usually on the financial side, it wasn't anything on the criminal side, but there were some questions in the finances. Both people were hired by the district, but we needed to have some kind of an explanation of why these things turned up on your financial, you know. And then, of course, office expenses are extra.
And when you talk about travel expenses, is it just you or do you have a team of people or?
Well, there's a gentleman, Steve Lauter, who worked the, actually, the Reynolds search and the Silverton search, or Springfield, and Lebed, actually, with me. He's in Vancouver.
Okay.
So it possibly will be him and I.
Okay. But you would be our lead?
It probably will be him and I.
Okay, but you would be our, kind of our.
I would be your lead.
Okay.
Yeah, I would be the lead consultant. Correct. And Steve was, he's actually a superintendent here, and he was also, he retired as superintendent of the Stockton School District in California, a couple of years ago, so. And again, I worked with him in Reynolds, Lebed, and Springfield. So just a review on that. So what is extra is thirty days for AASA and top jobs. I would say two days would be included in the, is not an extra. Travel is your paying for expenses. Two online surveys would be included in the original fee is not an extra. And then it's fifty dollars per video. And then one criminal background check is included if you would, any others you would.
And you think the pricing is similar to what Hank said? It was like eleven hundred or fifteen hundred or something, depending?
I, I think it's somewhere around a thousand, yeah.
Okay. And I guess I'm still not clear on the fourth bullet under note.
Okay. So, the, Washington, and see, that's where I began. So Washington does something different, I'm surprised to you, right, of everybody else in the country. So they, they were the ones who've always had the semifinal round. So what we do is we go to the semifinal round, because we've organized it, usually there's five applicants coming in. And so the board is still getting kind of up to speed with the whole process. And so I will be there for that. We'll be there for the semifinal round. For the finals, you typically will have one person per day. We're not there for that. So it's the three final candidates. If you did, I think it's a five hundred dollar a day. No one's ever had us come. And at that point, after that semifinal round, you guys are up to speed. You have the process in hand. You know, the one thing I wanted to mention before, something I reminded you said, the, the important thing to remember is, you asked me about different processes. I've never done a search that the process is the same. This is your process. We have a kind of a template here, but every community, every school district is different. And I can facilitate that process, and it's your process. We give you a guideline. But usually, some people like to do the stakeholder meetings before they do the criteria statements. Sometimes because they want community input first. Others, the board's pretty confident and they can do the criteria statements first. Some have open sessions for the semifinals, some have closed sessions. And it all depends on your relationship with the community. Some people have all, and this is one thing, all applicants come on one day. And some have, majority have it every other day. I can tell you the pros and cons to every single one of those decisions. And then you guys make the decision on which way you're going to go, because it is your process, and I will stress that again. We always say, if it's not immoral, illegal, or unethical, we'll do it. So.
It's good to know.
Okay, so, so those, those last three, but we'll be here for the semifinal.
That's clear.
Thank you.
Oh, and here are, I had the brochures. Here are the, I'll leave you with these. These are the kind of brochures, and it shows you the criteria statements that are in there, which is what the board selects. See, I'm going to give you these two things. These are the fees and also what we do.
Oh, excellent.
And that's that. Did I have a feeling I went over my twenty minutes?
Maybe.
You appreciate the time?
Thanks.
Coming out of business.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you for the information.
You're welcome. And here, two more pens for.
I like the stylus.
You like those?
Yeah.
They're very nice.
Anybody else? I bring these to every board meeting. I give you very work. Wish you'd been here, Debbie.
So may I ask, when will you make your, you're going to come back in another meeting? Is that how you guys are going to do it?
Yeah, the target currently is the October regular session meeting, which will be the second Monday.
The second Monday of the month, yeah.
The second Monday of the month, and then that's when you put it on the agenda and vote then.
Correct, yeah.
Good, and I, I agree with Hank. You're, you're well ahead of the timeline for searches. And most of them, the, the groups that start early will be done in the end of February, early March.
Nice, excellent. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much for having me.
You are.
Appreciate you having me. Thank you very much.
I'm going to ask each other.
Okay, Sarah.
Hello, guys. Hi, it's great to see you again. I must admit, I do miss being out here.
Oh, my gosh.
I've been the right job. I went and printed off copies, though, even though it's.
I think we got it. Yeah, we got it.
Yeah, fifteen copies of them.
Yeah.
I'm sure we need all of this tonight.
Yes, exactly. I remember a big cup of coffee.
Or, mostly those are, I need more sleep, news time.
Yeah, thank you very much. So I know all of you are familiar with me. And, and, or for you on the phone, this is Sarah with OSBA. Hi. I brought along our partner in searches, Greg McKenzie, Next Up Leadership.
Hello.
And, and Steve would have been here as well, but he's actually working with the Ontario School Board right now. So he's what he calls the East Coast of Oregon.
Time zone.
Yep, that's good. So, um, do you want to introduce yourself?
Sure. So just a little background. I've been doing searches since two thousand and three or four. I started with OSBA when I was working for OSBA, and then when I left OSBA, I started doing them myself, myself in two thousand and eight. And so I've been doing superintendent searches in Oregon since then. Over time, that's grown into probably somewhere between fifteen and twenty-five each year, depending upon the year. I also do administrator searches other than superintendent. So I'll do building principals, I'll do HR directors, chief financial officers, et cetera. And that has also expanded to Washington and Nevada. So primarily, I work in Oregon, Washington, and Nevada. And we are independent organizations. Mine is Next Up Leadership, which is just an assumed business name. But what we discovered a couple of years ago was that there were certain things OSBA did very well that we could take advantage of. And there were things that we do very well that they could take advantage of. So what we've done for Oregon searches over the last couple of years is team up and work together, so that we can take advantage of both the advantages we have and the advantages they have. And that's been very successful, I think. Because quite frankly, and I appreciate what all of the people before us said, but they can't touch us for marketing positions. We're just so far out ahead of everybody else on how that's handled. And I'll get into that a little bit later. But, so, we still do searches independently. We do Washington and Nevada, and sometimes in Oregon, when it's not appropriate for OSBA, such as charter schools and other administrator positions. So for superintendent searches, we try to do them together. For other positions, we will do them independently. But for this particular search, we would propose to you that we work together so you can take advantage of our marketing and their resources within OSBA. And I was involved with the interim search as well for the marketing side. So I've been, I've been in the background, if you will, for this particular search. So I'm, I'm out of the background. I am a live person.
And we also have two other folks other than Steve who part, who part, work with us in this partnership, Milt Dennison and Mike Taylor, former superintendents in Oregon and elsewhere, that, you know, assist or do the lead, depending on location and whatnot. So, um, one thing I really wanted to mention tonight was that OSBA is your organization. We are here, we exist solely for the success of your school boards, your districts, and ultimately, your students. So when we come in and facilitate a search with you, you are the boss. You guys make the decisions. And while we have a, a process that we recommend, it's fully customizable based on what you need, what, what Silver Falls needs and wants. So I wanted to make sure to mention that. Also, what's not in the proposal is that the interim search fee, the hourly fee, will be credited to the base fee for the permanent search, should you choose us. So you will essentially be getting the interim search for just the travel costs, which was my mileage from OSBA to here. One other thing, and I know we'll touch on this when we get down to it, is I also wanted to make sure to, to note that we did hear your concerns regarding some of the background checks and the timing. I know that with the interim search, it was such a condensed timeline. It was so tricky, and you guys did such a fabulous job and so much work. But we took a hard look at our background check process. We've incorporated additional time, especially in a, in a full permanent search, you've got so many months that we can do this work in. And so we are making those adjustments and incorporating more things based on your feedback. So I want to thank you for that. It's currently undergoing a legal review by our lawyers. And so should you choose us, we'll, more details to follow on that. So I'm just going to dive in a little bit and highlight some of the things that will be a little different from the interim search. Since that's so fresh with you guys, I'm sure you, you know and remember a lot of that process. So the permanent search will be very, very similar, more in depth, and again, stretched amongst many more months. And when it comes to the calendaring and when we do these phases, we can make recommendations, but then ultimately, you guys make the decision on when we're going to do these things, when you want to open, based on our recommendation, the application period, when you want to close, et cetera. And I've heard references to this throughout this evening about the community input. OSBA Next Up Leadership really emphasizes community engagement. The transparency that was spoken to earlier as well is incredibly important to us. We love working with the community and ensuring that their voices are heard, that they have an opportunity to provide feedback, and that that's also utilized by the board to create the qualities and qualifications that you may recall. So in the interim, we did, based on your policy for the qualities and qualifications of the superintendent, we went off those and built that into the interim process. For the permanent, because we have this opportunity of time, we are going to do two surveys, an English and a Spanish version, asking specific questions, some very similar to what you've heard this evening. What is fabulous about Silver Falls and Silverton? What are you looking for in your next superintendent? And this is asked of community members, of staff members, of students. And then what are some concerns or challenges really for the district right now? We put that survey out, we will utilize Debbie, and that goes for about two weeks, and all of those results come to me, and I create a report. Alongside that, I come into your district, I work with you on scheduling when I can meet with administrators, with staff, with students, if you like. And we have at least one community meeting, where even though this survey is available to everyone, a lot of times it's really nice to, to sit down face to face and, and verbally talk. So we make sure that everyone has an opportunity to come in and talk with me and let me know what they think and what they want. That will all get incorporated into a report that is brought to you guys. I'll kind of summarize, okay, here's what we're hearing the most. And we'll identify with your help what the qualities and qualifications are going to be for this position, for the superintendent position that is vacant right now. Then the board will vote to adopt, and we will incorporate that into every phase of this search. The qualities and qualifications are the foundation of this process. It is the lens through which you will view all of your candidates. And we incorporated, as you probably saw in the interim, into every phase, into the interview questions, into the advertising, which Greg will speak to, because he knows it the best, and all the way down the line. So community engagement is huge for us, and it's not just at the beginning. After, we'll do interviews and, and whatnot. Once you've identified your finalists, we will invite the community back for a finalist forum that would be moderated by me. And again, a lot of this can be changed if you have a specific desire to go in a different direction. This is just the process we found works the best for us. So we invite each finalist back, and we schedule them out, about a half an hour apart, and they come in and they meet with the community, and they take a few minutes, talk about themselves, share whatever they'd like to share. And then we take questions from the audience, and they can write them down on note cards, hand them to me. I will ask the question, the candidate will give the answer, so on and so forth. And whether or not they want to ask a question, they will all have feedback forms, and very sim, they're the same ones, actually, that we used for the screening committee. So every person who comes. So every person who comes to that meeting gets an opportunity to share with you their thoughts. And you will have an opportunity to review all of that. So I skipped ahead to the finalists, but I wanted to make sure I touched on that so you understood that it really is foundational for us.
Could I interject here?
Please.
I think this is one place that we differentiate ourselves in a big way from other firms, especially the national firms, because of their travel limitations to get here. They identify one day or two days that they're going to come and do community outreach and staff outreach. We don't put a limit on that. In fact, one district we searched about two years ago, we ended up with 23, we call them focus groups. And it was because that community needed that many, because there was some turmoil about the superintendent and the athletic staff. And there's always problems with athletic staffs. But we did 23 because that's what they needed, and it was spread over three, four, or five days. And so we don't limit how many groups you need for us to interview or talk with about the search. You tell us how many and we go talk to them. We'll have some suggestions about who we should be talking to, but at the same time, you'll give us feedback about who you want us to go talk to.
Yeah, if there's specific community members that you would like me to sit down with outside of the community meeting forum, happy to do that. When we did the Klamath County search, Steve was there for a full week doing visits at every school. And you don't pay for our hourly time for this. That's what the base fee is for. Everything is included, save for the mileage. And if I'm here for 12 hours, I might need some food. I could bring a bunch of protein bars. So, that is an important piece for us.
Can I interject about advertising here?
Yeah, I was just going to ask if you wanted to talk about advertising.
So another place where we differentiate ourselves from others, especially the national firms, and that term is a little misleading because they're national, because they're not located here. They're located in Omaha, or Chicago, or Atlanta, or wherever. It's impossible to not do a national search, even if you're a local search consultant here that just focuses only on Oregon districts. Have you ever heard of the internet? You put something out there, and it gets picked up by all kinds of search sites that you just don't know about until you actually see a candidate who comes from that site. And they take pride in grabbing your job and putting it on their site because it makes them look good. So it's virtually impossible to not do a national search these days. But where we do differentiate ourselves is we have established what I consider a personal relationship with about 30,000 school administrators in virtually every western United States, every state in the western US, from Texas to the Pacific Ocean, except for Arizona, which remains hard enough to crack as far as getting their lists. But years ago, by necessity, I started sending e-fliers. And we call those brochures e-fliers because nobody wants to see a mailed brochure these days. They prefer to get it on their smartphones. And they'll look at it on their smartphone and see the flyer. But that's how we do the same thing. And I started sending those directly to administrators. And I started with Washington, Oregon, and California. And each year, I kind of expanded, add more. And right now, we're up to about 30,000 administrators in Oregon, Washington, California, Nevada, Utah, Wyoming, Montana, New Mexico, Texas, Kansas, Minnesota. And what I've discovered is, we've actually built a network and kind of a social community with them because they're so used to seeing what we send to them. They'll just send me back a short little note, not this year, but next year, or hey, I'm thinking about retiring, or wow, that looks like a pretty good job. So I'll spend hours, as soon as we send out one of those brochures, just communicating with them. People come through Oregon, they'll stop if we go have a Starbucks meet just because of the way we have been connecting with them. And the measure of it being kind of a social community, I think, is normally the unsubscribe rate for that kind of unsolicited e-commerce advertising is about 6% nationwide. Our unsubscribe rate is about 0.6%, so it's 10 times less. School administrators are just curious about jobs in other places and how much they're paying. So we do that, in addition to all of the traditional posting on job sites that we will talk with you about and let you choose which ones. And except for the extraordinary ones, those are all included in the basic fee cost. We don't have to add extra cost for that. So you get a lot of bang for your buck simply because we've taken the time to build a social network of about 30,000 educators, administrative educators in the western US.
And OSBA is also a member of what's called NASS, the National Affiliation of Superintendent Searchers, which is other school board association superintendent searchers. And they post anything we send them on their sites as well. And we communicate via email, it's a great network. Steve and I went there shortly after, I think it was the same night, actually, that we finished with you. We went to our conference there in Ohio this year, so. One other thing I think is noteworthy is I kept track of where applicants were saying they'd heard about job postings and whatnot. And there were three main sources. COSA, the Superintendent Association, OSBA, and Greg McKenzie. It just, even A, was it AASA, ASA, A?
AASA, yeah.
Yeah, that one was never listed. So, whatever that's worth.
K-12, K-12 jobs. Sounds good. It's national advertising, but nobody shows up. What we've discovered, and we've kind of tracked this, is candidates come from your state, whatever state that is, and the state that touches your state 90% of the time. So the notion that you're going to have a national campaign to bring everybody from Indiana, and Florida, and Vermont, and New York, is great thought, but just doesn't happen. So we really focus on where the candidates come from, which is the western US. And we've been highly successful doing that. I've talked to search consultants in Connecticut. They have the same experience, your state and a state that touches your state. I've talked to search consultants in Illinois, same comment, our state and a state that touches our state. So, running a national campaign, yeah, you want to find that nugget out there that maybe wants to come to Oregon. We don't dismiss that, and we do it. But the fact is, being more regional is more realistic in what you're going to see.
And the candidates that want to come to Oregon, they're going to be looking at our website. They're going to be looking at OSBA's website and COSA's website. So that's...
It's called the internet.
And they reach out to us as well, yes, yes. But just like Greg mentioned, he sends out his electronic flyers, and he gets responses back. We also, Steve and I at OSBA, have people reach out to us and say, hey, you know, I would love to come and be a superintendent in Oregon. Please make sure I know about your vacancies. So we're always hearing from them.
So, I do need to mention this. One of the philosophies of both our firm and OSBA is we don't think the search consultant ought to high-grade and select who gets picked to be presented to you as candidates. We want to guide you in the thought process. We want you to see every single application. Depending on how many you get, we may need to narrow it down. But we're not going to narrow it down by ourselves. We're going to get some help from you. But the thought that we're going to bring you only a small handful and say, these are the ones we think you want, it just isn't the way we believe searching should be done. I'm a board member. I'm a Clackamas ESD board member right now. I was a Wesleyan Wiltson K-12 board member for eight years. And I did not want search consultants choosing for me who I thought wasn't fit for our district. That's the job of the board. And so we're going to let you know who they all are. We may help you narrow that list, but we're not going to high-grade the list and say, here's the top five, six, or seven that we think you ought to be interviewing.
Right. If it's the board's desire that we assist in somehow shortening the list or whatnot, that's definitely something that we can talk about if that's what you'd like. But you will determine the criteria for which that is determined.
I mean, I can see pros and cons.
It won't be based on what we think.
We had one search where we had 53 candidates. Now, that sounds great. Until you have to deal with 53 candidates and applications. And so we had to find a system. Create an intermediate system to cut the list to a more manageable number. So we're flexible enough to make that happen. It depends on how many you get. Like I said, 53 sounded wonderful, but we had to deal with it.
We did... Anyway, it was a lot, and it was way plenty.
Yes, we did an interim search, and there was a high number of candidates. And the board wanted, you know, can you maybe narrow it down to 10? And we weren't entirely comfortable with that because we are used to, is our philosophy, you see everything. So what we did is, we gave them everything, but we said, here's a list of candidates who meet this criteria. Current superintendents, or, you know, recently retired superintendents, experience in Oregon, similar-sized school district. It was very cut and dried, facts based on the information in that.
But it's going to be working with the board to make the determination.
Your siding this. So with the interim, we did the one single interview, and that became the finalists. With this process, we will have, I guess you could say, preliminary interviews. We will review all the applications, rank everybody, deliberate on who you want to ask to come in for interviews and what that number is. And then you have those interviews. And then we talk again, and we deliberate and do brief on those interviews and some preliminary background information. And then you determine who you'd like to interview, sorry, who you would like to invite to be a finalist. Then we're talking very in-depth reference background check process. It's not just phone calls, it's site visits. It's going out to these districts and seeing how they operate, seeing how they work around their folks, and what those folks have to say about the candidates. It's going out into their community, into the coffee shops, and saying, hey, what do you think about your superintendent? Things like that. And then, of course, internet checks, we will also be incorporating, but I can't give too much detail because it's not still in the legal review, some sort of formal background check as well. That also happens once you hire your superintendent. TSBC has their own background check process as well. So let's not forget about that. Site visits, then they come in for the sort of community forum. We, you know, should you go with our process, have them tour your schools, meet with administrators, with staff, meet with students, take them out to lunch or dinner. Not a quorum, but, you know, we would kind of break you up. That way, you get to know them on a little bit different basis, and you get a real feel for their personality and how they interact with people. And then again, that community meeting, usually in the evening, where we highly encourage the board to be present because, again, it's an opportunity to watch how they interact with your community, with your parents and your staff. Truly, truly valuable. Following that, we have debrief on, site visits, and reference checks, and any of those feedback forums. And then we have final interview. And that's the opportunity to ask the really hard questions and to really cut to the core on what it is you're looking to find out. And then we deliberate some more. Identify your top candidate and your backup candidate, and move on with contract negotiations. And we will be there through every step of the process. You will probably get tired of seeing me, but I will get tired of seeing you. And one other thing that's unique to the permanent search is our transition plan and our two-year guarantee. I know some other firms have a two-year guarantee as well, which is great. We have not had to utilize ours. There are two caveats to maintaining the two-year guarantee that's doing the site visits. You really get to know the candidate, and we find that to be very crucial. And the districts that we've worked with and have done the site visits always come back and say, I am so glad I did that. That was just so informational. And then the other thing is the transition plan, which is what I'm going to speak to you right now. You get a minimum of six hours of professional development, up to 12 hours. And right now, I know you're working with Renee from my team. It could be her, it could be Steve, it could be, you know, anybody that you guys want to work with. But we come in and we help build the relationship with your new superintendent and with the board. And since we will have been with you through this whole process, we'll know a little bit more about, you know, what you're wanting, what your needs are, and how we can facilitate those conversations. And we work on communication protocols, and board and superintendent operating agreement, and whatever it is that you really want to focus. If there's something specific that you, as a board, really think like, oh, we just, we got to get into this, that's available, those hours. It's included with your base fee. You would just pay the mileage, and if there was a... But you get up to 12 hours of that one-on-one, you know, facilitated work, yes.
So in Bend, at the summer conference, I sat at Steve's table about superintendent evaluation. And he talked about, like, that may be an option for us because I know OSBA is kind of changing their model, that that would be something that, is that, those are the hours that we would use?
Yes, you can definitely utilize the transition plan to work on that. You can work on, I know you have a strategic vision, but if you didn't, you could work on setting goals and a strategic plan, the superintendent evaluation, the board self-eval, if you wanted to do, we're doing that next month.
Right.
Brilliant.
Next week.
That's wonderful, with us? With ours? Oh, it's so wonderful, okay, I'm so happy for you guys. Yeah, I mean, really, kind of the sky's the limit. Obviously, the minimum will be working with your superintendent and building that relationship and laying that foundation. And then from there, it's really what is the need of the board and the superintendent and the district. Aside from that transition plan, we also have, as part of our... Well, okay, so it's part of the transition plan, but it's outside of the six to 12 hours of professional development. We will work with your new superintendent in a somewhat mentoring capacity, that they will have mentors available through COSA. And if they are a new superintendent to Oregon, or a new superintendent in general, we will make sure they get into the COSA Academy for new superintendents. They'll get mentors there. But we will also work in a mentoring capacity. We will make connections with them very shortly after they begin, if not before that, helping them determine who they need to make contact with, who they need to meet with and start talking to, and what are the things that they need to accomplish. So we aren't just there for you guys. We're also there for that superintendent that you have found. You know, we don't want to just say, hey, congratulations, you have a new superintendent, we'll see you later. We stick with you because we're very into building and maintaining relationships with our school districts. It's one way that we can feel connected to the students in Oregon. And this is how we have an impact in their lives, is working with school boards who then make that impact.
Can I ask a question about the site visits?
Please.
So let me just make sure I'm understanding. So some board members would go to the candidate's district and do whatever you suggest. Now, what if, I'm imagining, you know, say, three finalists. I imagine they're going to keep the pool pretty small, so many goals is doable. You, if you're going to do site visits for one, you have to do site visits for them all?
You would do site visits for all of the finalists.
And what if they're in Nevada and Utah? You still, those are still protocols that you would...
Yes.
So we might need to consider what expenses would be involved?
Those potentials, yes, yes. We have had, we had a finalist one year in Montana, and two board members hopped on a plane and went up to Montana. And we're very happy that they did.
Okay, all right.
So there is a caveat there.
Yes.
And the caveat is, if one of the finalists is from Hawaii, the consultants have to go.
Very, very important. There's a special weird thing about Hawaii. You will need our hand. To stay focused, right? That's exactly what you're going to need. Not just a day, like a whole week, you really need to dig in there.
Does that have a question about your expenses?
Yes.
So you have a base fee, correct, right? And then you have, it says here that there will be other fees added to. Usually, it says $2,000 to $3,500 total.
That's a ballpark.
Ballpark, yeah, exactly. And then you have a typical items of expenses on the next page, you know?
Correct.
Advertising.
Note that that's only extraordinary advertising. Base advertising is included in the price, so.
I guess some extra advertising, okay. I guess some extra advertising, okay.
Yeah, so if you wanted to go to a lot of the national sites, we'd have to come to you and get your permission and then you'll do that, that would be in addition.
And then photocopy costs and supplies?
Yeah, that's not really gonna factor in here. Um, I'll be taking care of pretty much everything at OSBA, so.
Okay. And the other ones are basic.
We're kind of not electronic by most of the application process.
Okay.
So our experience has been for a district this close to where we are and we're out of, I'm out of Westland and obviously Sarah's out of Salem. It's the travel cost mostly and that's very minimal. So even for districts as far away as Crook County, I think it was like nineteen hundred dollars total. So you're, you're gonna spend something under two thousand dollars, even if you go kind of crazy with advertising and other things.
Yeah. If, if you were far away such that I would need to stay in a hotel and then we have what, breakfast, lunch, possibly dinner? Um, and the, the mileage, you know, being extensive enough, that's how it adds up. Um, it's gonna be very minimal, um, travel expenses here. I really don't think I'm gonna stay the night in Silverton. But if I do, it's gonna have to be the, the Oregon Guard guards, right?
So can I, can I add a, something here that is, I think, somewhat unique? And this may or may not apply to you, I noticed that you do have about twenty percent minority students and at least that's the demographic that I saw. So some boards will come to us and say, be sure that you have a very diverse field of candidates. Now, you have to define diversity, that can be described in a lot of different ways. But I've heard that over the last couple of years a lot, especially from candidates of color. So what I did this summer was I started kind of a personal project to get ahold of candidates of color in Washington, Oregon and California that were superintendents, building principals, HR directors and other senior leadership positions. And I had personal interviews with them. And these are people I knew because of that social networking stuff that I had, had mentioned before. And what we learned was things that seemed to create an unlevel playing field for candidates of color in their perception. But what I also learned wa- was things that we can tune up our process. So Sarah has been a little general about describing some of the process because if you drill down into the details, we're working on tuning that up not just for diverse candidates, but for all candidates because the information I picked up was very valuable in what candidates need to see in order to feel comfortable in the district. Because what you have to realize is even though you think you are recruiting them, they are shopping you at the same time. And it starts right from the very beginning, the very first time they have a chance to meet you. And if you don't recognize that, then you miss an opportunity perhaps sometimes to grab a good candidate. So we're kind of tuning up a little of, of the process and so we're hopeful that it's gonna be.
It's been a busy summer for us.
Yeah, I saw it by your list, your list was big.
Yes, yes. Went by so fast though. Not always what you want with summer though, right?
So all of the people in the back of your proposal, those are all included in the base price?
Yes.
They're all?
They're all, we consider it a team?
A team, okay.
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Yes, there's like, I think six people.
Yes, if, if, let's say for example, when I would come to do the um, quality, qualities and qualifications meetings with the schools and with the community, if I, I felt I needed an additional person. Um, and let's say for example that it was Greg and Greg was coming from Westland and I was coming from Salem, you would only pay for my mileage from Salem, you wouldn't pay for both of ours.
Oh, okay, and that was the distinction that I was just gonna ask after. Was the distinction of, I mean, and I'm assuming this is for the other firms, I'm not sure, but I'm, I didn't ask those questions before, but I thought about it now, so.
We give the board the benefit of the doubt and the least cost. If one person could have done it, we charge for one. If we choose for our convenience to have two or three, for the focus groups especially, we'll still just charge for the one. And what happens sometimes is because you want to have as many of these groups, uh, meetings as you can at the front end of the search, sometimes they have to get double booked.
Yeah, sometimes.
And so you may have two of them going at the same time. And so that's where we would have somebody come in. Or sometimes there is a scheduling conflict on one day and one of us has to come and do those. But there would be one person that's your primary focus for this search and then everybody else would be available if needed.
And I know we're talking about the permanent search, but when it comes to the interim search in terms of the hourly rate and the mileage, you will only be invoiced for my time, not for Steve's in addition to that, just.
So the references that you have here, are those multiple different searches? Like not just superintendent?
No.
No, those are all superintendent.
Yes, so OSBA only does superintendent searches for school districts and we can do and have done executive director searches for charter schools. If the charter school is looking for a principal, then we are not, yeah, that would be. So earlier this past year, we did um, the executive director search for Arco Eris Spanish Immersion School, for example.
Okay, very good, okay.
And the ones that we have listed for us are all superintendent searches.
So the answer to your question is yes.
For people, for our community, yeah, so. What was the cost of the interim search? I don't remember that number.
That's because you haven't quite seen it yet.
Oh.
Our, our department administrative assistant is out on medical leave unfortunately. So we are a little backed up in our billing, um, but we're working on focusing on that now and, and your district office should be receiving that soon.
Okay.
I believe we probably had a, a two thousand dollar cap on it.
There was an estimate. I wanna say it was, I remember eighteen or nineteen hundred dollars.
Yeah, that's what I remember, but it was, it was an estimate.
It was an estimate, yeah.
Yeah, not to go above and, and it could be below. And um, and again, only thing that would, you would end up paying in the end would be the mileage if you chose us for the permanent search.
Okay, any other questions?
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yes, thanks for having us come in, it's great to have you all.
Nice to meet all of you. And not just an electronic.
Alright, you guys are great.
Bye now, thank you.
Say hello to Steve for us.
I will. I think I get to see him on Thursday.
Gonna see Jerry?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Very thorough.
Yes.
It was good information. Especially if we have to turn around in such a short timeframe and kind of review materials and then make a decision, we need to get all our questions answered.
And if I can add, um, after Hank's, um, after he proposed, his presentation, he emailed and said, one thing he neglected to mention is that, but for some previous engagements this week, I would have been willing, more than willing to come to Silverton to meet you in person. Given that if the board would like to meet with me in person prior to making a final decision, he'd be happy to come out to one of our next meetings with no obligation on our end in order to have the opportunity to speak to him in person. And he thanked everybody.
Okay.
Board.
Great, absolutely.
So just while we're all in the same mindset.
That's great, yeah.
There we go.
Well, one of the things that is important, I think, in this process and one of the reasons we are going through this process is to make sure that once a permanent superintendent is hired, that we've been as transparent, I heard that word a number of times, right, as transparent as possible. I think it's critical, you know, we've had a pretty tumultuous last couple of years, at least the last one year in particular.
Yes.
And I for one, wanna make sure that we're absolutely transparent about this process, about the process of the actual selection, about, you know, the forums and, and all of that. And I wanna thank you, Shelley, for, you know, contacting and soliciting and organizing and, yeah, ten minutes was pie in the sky. I, you know, there was, there was more than they could possibly have presented in fairness to that.
Yeah.
And, you know, I am glad that, that we got to hear what we got to hear. Before we transition off of this topic, while we are together and can talk as a group, I wanna make sure, we have a chance, if you guys wanna talk about this process, about any of your concerns about any of what you heard tonight, I wanna make sure that happens where we can. We can also discuss it uh, in October's regular session, as part of the action item. But you may wanna talk about some things now before, you know, discerning our options and whatnot. So I wanna open that up before we move off of this topic.
Well, first I just wanna thank um, our superintendent, Paul. Um, he did the next day send five.
And he offered those?
Firms, organizations, he offered them up, so, thank you, I appreciate that. I, I, that got the ball rolling and I found two other firms. Um, and clearly some responded, they wanted to be a part of the process, others didn't respond. One said, we don't search out of California. Um, so it was, it was actually a very good um, learning, learning process for me. Um, and I, I agree with you completely on the transparency and I just wanted to be very thorough.
Yeah, that was good.
I just, I wanted to be, I just wanted this process to be very thorough so when we need to talk about it in our community, we can say, you know, we searched it, we talked with people, we analyzed it, we went through it and these are the reasons, this is the reason why we made this decision. So I think it's healthy, um, and I, I love doing it. I loved calling them and sending emails and it was, it was good work, so, anyway, thank you.
Well, I um, don't think I'm changing my position on my favorite person or favorite firm, but I do appreciate that we went through the process because I think that um, it just helps give you confidence in making a decision more.
There was a lot of good information, I heard a lot of similar things, which is also good, right? You know?
Yeah, I heard a lot of similar things.
I think that makes sense.
Yeah.
Um, you know, when, when you hear a lot of the, the same kind of things, it does reinforce that those are best practices and that, and that's what you should expect. I think pricing was similar on a couple and not quite as similar for one, right? Those are good things to know. I, I would have no guess frankly as to whether they'd all been right in the same ballpark or all over the map. It was just good to know uh, what we were looking at and a good reminder of what we're looking at.
Yeah, and we can be responsible to the community, like Shelley said, about the, the prices.
Multiple things, yeah, we have to just know what we know and we have the data for it.
And that's really what we're elected to do as well, is to be thorough and to be, and be willing to do our research and uh, and that's, and thank you for your work.
Sure, sure.
They were great presentations and, yeah, I found it uh, to be very enlightening. But like you said, there is all those good practices, it seems to be consistent with the firms that presented, that's great to hear.
Well, I can't rate to research more, I haven't made a decision yet. I feel like I can't yet. I'd like to go through now that I've had the interviews and the, and the presentations. Um, I feel for me that um, I'll get, in a good two weeks to have some reading material and dissect and highlight and uh, come up with my conclusion, so, yeah.
Were all of these on board book? I know two of them were.
Yes, all three of them should have been on board book.
Okay, 'cause I did read the.
Yeah.
I didn't get OSB's, so. Debbie, are all, all of these proposals on board book?
Yes.
Okay.
Great.
Is Erv still here? Erv?
Yeah.
Okay, just checking in.
I'm in definitely with Lynn.
Feel free to interject.
Thank you.
So our plan is to make a decision the first board meeting?
I, I think we should, right?
Yeah, okay.
I think we have the information.
I think we have the information, I think we.
We'll be informed, yeah.
There's a couple weeks to chew on this, if you have questions. Uh, but yeah, I'd like to decide in October. That puts us, as they all said, in good position to, to get the ball rolling and make sure we've got the process moving.
I, I do wanna point out that one thing that I noticed before they pointed out, OSB pointed out was that um, the, the second presenter talked about narrowing the field, you know, and, and doing the interviews, that pre-interview process. That's a big difference between how they approach the work and how OSB approaches the work. So that to me was like a, I, I, my ears perked up when they, when he said.
I think that's sort of one of the fundamental differences, I think you totally nailed it in terms of feeling like we're driving the process, but there's a lot more work on our part.
Right.
Versus someone else saying, I'm just gonna do this for you and then I'm gonna present you with these kind of, you know, the final and, and just make your, make your job as easy as possible, which is their, I think legitimately, how they perceive their work. Is you hired me, you're paying me this money, I'm gonna do all of this work for you and I'm gonna make this streamlined. Whereas OSB's approach is, is much different. It's about facilitating our own process. So I don't know that one is better than the other.
They're different.
But I think that's a very, that's a sort of a philosophical difference.
That was the difference, so.
Yeah, I thought that was something.
That was the difference of, of the, of the.
The private first.
I have to admit, there was something compelling about getting candidates set in candidates.
I know.
Well.
Well, I, I agree, I agree.
I, I would, yeah, I, I like, I did like that, I mean, this is their job. They, everybody puts their best face forward, everyone says I'm the best.
Sure.
But they've seen, they know the BSers from the, from the real deal, that's, that's the job. So they can tend to sift through that, that's, that, that's their job, so that is a.
The professional.
That's, right, but, but, but I think we can ask, you know, but, but OSB also kind of offered, they said, we can help you, you know, kind of offer our best.
One thing too that I was wondering about, um, and I didn't wonder until the OSB presentation. Um, OSB is a nonprofit organization, I don't know about the other two, that would be something interesting too.
Yeah, yeah, I, I'm guessing they're for profit.
Yeah, and so that's a, that's a big difference to me.
Are you open for, for audience observation?
Not typically in a work session.
You could send us your thoughts though.
Right.
Sorry?
You could send us your thoughts on email.
I think the difference between a national organization and a local organization and as far as, you know, narrowing down people and then bringing it to us, um, when you are on a national scale, you're, the, the logical thought process is you're probably gonna get more applicants in. So they kind of narrow it out and say, okay, well, let's kind of go down this path. Um, local, um, OSB does Texas to the Pacific Ocean. So I get both sides. I see both of the, you know, why they would say, well, if we get a hundred and twenty applications on the national side, um, from the national firms and OSB says, well, we get, you know, fifty-three, I understand the process of why they, you know, well, we'll bring you, you know, twenty-four, but then the national one says, well, we're not gonna bring you a hundred and fifty, we're gonna bring you thirty-five. So I think it's the same, it's the same thought, it's just on a different scale. And, yeah, I mean, I, that's how I look at it. It's not good or bad, it's just different in how I see that difference. Um, so, I don't know, I mean.
It is, it is really philosophical, I mean, I, I think some firms would like to say, this is our job, let me do this filtering process for you. And OSB sounds more board-driven, where they really want us involved. And I can definitely appreciate that.
Yeah.
By the same token, I'd love to see some candidates from the East Coast, you know? Just to be able to compare.
Right.
And um, so yeah, I think there are absolutely pros and cons and we're not going to get necessarily the, everything in one package. We just weigh our priorities and decide what's most important.
Sure. Yeah. Yeah.
Guys, ready to move on?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, what I'm gonna recommend is we take a brief bio break and.
Never heard that.
Yeah. We use it in a work all the time, sorry. That's the term I.
Continue to use that.
And uh, then we'll reconvene in about five.
Okay, okay.
Sounds good.
Good.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I was putting, pushing those, those carts, those moving carts. Give me one, you know, in five minutes, not executive session. I mean, it's not, you know, since I haven't been eating, so, I don't know, it's not official.
Well, I'll share them, uh, you know, I just wanted to.
How's school visits going? Good, how many, how many, how many have you been to? All of them? Alright, okay, that was a quick list. I, I remember seeing the list thinking, I wonder if I could get on those.
Oh, oh, well, who is it, with board members?
Yeah, the two or the.
Um, I've only, so Lori's and I've been to almost all of them. But I have been at all of them many times.
Yeah, 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 okay, good.
We have a sign-up sheet for you tonight.
This was my attempt, I tried to share this via Google Doc, so.
I thought, yeah, I saw that.
Were you able to get in?
I looked.
I don't think you would be able to get in.
I had to ask for an invite, now, I, yeah, I did, I don't have a. No, I, I was able to get in because Paul, I asked for an invite from my personal account, so I was able to. from my personal account, so I was able to get in.
Okay, okay.
I was able to get it. But it was from my, but it was from my personal account, I thought, wait a minute, I'm supposed to probably set up through my.
And Shelley couldn't do it anyway, so she, she and I worked with tech, and so I was, you know, if there's anything that works.
I just need to make it happen here on the list.
But Lori and I have been, it's been, it's been good.
Yeah.
And we're getting a lot of good feedback from staff, I'd love to see us out there.
You, you know what, they do, and that, that's great, that's a great way to prompt us to go visit.
Yep.
And talk to you at the same time, you learn, you do, you kind of multitask.
It's time well spent.
Yeah. Real smart.
Comfortable shoes, though, is the key.
Man. December. Silvercrest, Victor Point, Prattum.
It's a good-looking sweatshirt there.
I know, caused me, caused me a lot.
Is that where baby is?
That's where she is, and you should be giving it to me for free. But yeah, no, that's where she's at, she's, you know, it's, it's, um, I think it's a good fit for her. I think she's really happy there.
She communicates?
International business.
International business, okay.
But, you know, she's, she'll probably change. You know, I mean, it's like her roommate, I can't wait to hear, I mean, her, her roommates are perfect for her.
Was it random, or is it?
Random, yeah, random. But, you know, but they got to know each other, but they, good fit. One of her friends from Mont Angel, Claire Seiler, went down to visit. Do you, do you know Claire?
Well, I, I hear, I hear.
You hear the name, yeah, she's one of these.
Who's this Claire, I saw, I hear Claire's name a lot, yeah.
And so she flew down and visited her the past weekend. She spent Saturday with Addie's, because Addie had to work. So she spent Saturday with Addie's roommate at a homeless shelter in the Tenderloin District. And I so want to talk to her about that one, yeah. I want to see, how did that go? Because we all hear things and read things, but now here's somebody I know, what, how was that?
Yeah.
And I thought, good for them for doing that, you know, for putting those out there. Just, it's just really good to see.
Right, my daughter Maddie's down, she's lived in California this, well, this, it's turned into a year now, and her friend works at the Dream Center, and, I think it's in Silver Lake. So, and Maddie's been spending a lot of time with Brooke down there, and so, and Maddie will go with her, and she, Maddie tells me, like, where they're going, and I'm like.
They're like, "Don't tell."
I, I, I know these areas, I know what Skid Row is like, and you're telling me that you're going down to Skid Row, you're going down to the projects? I mean, Ron grew up in Compton, like, in the seventies, and it was already, like, rough.
Yeah, yeah.
In the seventies, so I'm like.
Ron grew up in Compton?
Yes. Steve, Steve Nielsen's kids, when they found out, they're like.
Are you kidding me?
No, they couldn't, they couldn't get enough, they're like, so they called him Compton Ron. So, they called him Compton Ron because it was, but they found this little nugget out about the time that, that movie came out, that.
Out of Compton.
So they're like, they're like, they're like, you're, you're. And it's like, it wasn't so cool.
I don't think it was.
No, I mean, but it, I mean, it's changed dramatically, but. I mean, Ron's like, you know, growing up, like, that, you know, he says, "You're going to get chased for your bike on a daily basis, sometimes you got it back, sometimes you didn't, sometimes you found an alley next week," but it was like, made us good runners. Yes, yeah, he, yeah, I, he spent some of his child in Compton. Huh? My dad, your dad did, my dad had his jet down there, um, for about, he had a customer.
That's a long way.
For about fifteen, twenty years.
Yeah, I really need to talk to him.
And I, I was in the, like, late, the eighties, early nineties, and I'd go down there, I'd pick them up, and we'd go have dinner, and I got lost once, and I, when I showed up, it was called Dex Speed, it was right in the middle of it. I, I pulled up late, and everybody was out there waiting, like, out of all the young folks, they're like, "Did you make it here?" And, yeah. And, and I mean, the stuff that they, that they would come, like, my brother showed up one day to, to, on the job, and there was a child. Just because that was not normal, but it was what they dealt with. Terrible.
You know what?
No, we're for.
I'm just going to take care of this.
He was, he was literally one of two non-African-American students in this high school.
Oh, that's, you don't have to write this down.
My cousin Walt.
My cousin Walt, my cousin Walt was.
Oh, really?
In Santa Ana was one of three white kids in Santa Ana, or in, in his class, in his class. He's got some stories.
Oh, that's what I'm saying.
But he, but he was, he was great, it was fun, I mean, he, it was, it was.
We're just waiting on Jenna.
How it goes.
I know, that's what I have to look at.
Now, wife.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, it's, it's just funny because it was a whole different.
Whole different, well, yeah.
Well, Tricia, she was a rocker, she was a rocker chick, she, she isn't, she, she isn't a special. I mean, she's been it long enough, you know, she's just a, went to school in Iron Maiden T-shirts.
Most of ours, at one, at one point, all of our churches. What's that?
There's nothing wrong there.
Is that with Iron Maiden T-shirts?
What's that?
Are we still being always?
Especially if you've been to an Iron Maiden drop.
That's right.
No, nothing at all, I mean, I was listening to all the way in, I was listening to, I love Maiden.
There's so many surprises tonight, I mean, there's lots.
I want guys cool and alert ladies.
I took a picture of this, give them the, all this email, you might date.
No problem, yes.
That's it.
And give me, Shelley, give me a couple options in case what you could do fills that tonight.
Oh, totally, yeah.
Which was the point.
And because of, and eighty-four. I almost got, they were in town, I almost got tickets.
It's, and then.
I almost got tickets, sorry.
Well, Google got funky with me because.
All right, guys, we're gonna, we're gonna reconvene.
Get her going.
All right, next step on the agenda, superintendent's entry plan.
All right, thank you. Uh, really, this is just sort of a information from me to you, uh, and sort of, I guess, a public unveiling of a document that I've been actually using now for a few weeks.
Okay.
If this is the first time I've seen, I apologize, but, uh, I wanted to be able to communicate to people a, a little bit about who I am, what are the things I stand for. Dan has done some nice, he did some nice new guy videos, I'm not going to do any videos.
Okay.
Not about me, I'll do videos about other people and, and programs. But I wanted to communicate really clearly to folks in a way that I think is accessible, and they can take it with them and read it and, and, or, or bid it, whatever they feel like to do. So there's, the first page is just a, a letter from me, kind of standard superintendent-type letter. And the second page is, I could go in an important way, this is just, I wanted to get on paper some things that are, are personal core vision and beliefs for me that define who I am as a person and as a leader. So I wanted to just express that for folks. Uh, there's a couple, there's a couple of key phrases in here, that we are, that we are preparing students for their future, not our past. I think as we adults engage in change discussions for schools, we often get stuck by looking in the rearview mirror at our, our own education as a, as a way for the, to make decisions, but we need to think about what is the future our kids are going, are going into. Also, uh, I talked about being a leader for equity, uh, the fact that we need to be in continuous improvement. So there's just a little bit of my core, uh, core values and beliefs. And then I also wanted to communicate on the next page, just a little bit how I see my work shaping up this year. People want to know, "What are you doing, Paul? Are you going to do too much or too little?" Because I'm sure everybody will have an opinion on that eventually. Uh, so I wanted to just communicate that, you know, first couple of months of my time here is really about listening, really intently, and in fact, I'm following this presentation, we're going to talk, I'm going to share with you what I've heard. And, uh, so, uh, that, that listening then translates into then some goal setting, which we're also going to start talking about tonight, and I'll ask you in, in October, that we're going to need to approve my goals or give me different goals. And then, then the, the remainder of the year is about following up and implementing in a really strong way our strategic plan. So that just communicates to people kind of how I see my year being laid out. And then just a, a final conclusion thoughts, and that's, that's it. I know some entry plan documents in, uh, larger districts seem to be, you know, a dozen pages long. I thought this communicates the most important parts of who I am and what I'm going to be doing this year, so.
Okay.
Uh, feel, uh, feel free to give me feedback on this, share it with others. As we go, as Dan and I go out and do staff presentations, I take copies of this and just kind of hand it out. People can do with it what they want, so, I hope that's helpful.
Is it on board book? It will be tomorrow?
Yeah.
Okay, great, yeah, awesome.
That's good to know. Yeah, I think it'd be great to share.
Yeah, yes. To share those with, yeah.
Okay?
Yeah, fantastic.
Any questions or thoughts on that?
Well, I can.
This is outstanding, thank you.
This is a great bridge for bringing yourself to our board, community, district, everybody, so, great, thank you.
I need to get something to that our town, and I, I was going to send them this. I was supposed to do that today, I wasn't back. All right, so the next part of this is, I, I did engage in quite a bit of listening. Normally, in a, you know, had I started on July one, this would all have been happening a month ago. Uh, I would have spent, you know, a couple of months listening, and that's what I've been doing. So we're kind of one month behind, I think it's still relevant. Uh, but let me share with you, after listening and talking with just a, a whole bunch of people, board members, uh, past board members, staff, principals, parents, kind of anybody that can get in here to talk with me, I've just kind of taken a bunch of notes, and I wanted to share with you what I've heard. And I want to say also that I'm not done.
Right.
Right.
I will keep listening, I will keep talking to people, and if there's people that you think I really should spend a few minutes with, uh, I want you to send me their names and definitely get them on my schedule. So I'm just going to take a few minutes, and I, I know you can read this, but I want to read it out loud anyways, because I think it's important. So I spent considerable time with people, including our school leaders, board members, staff, parents, and community members. In addition to asking people to respond to nine questions, I also enjoyed engaging in open-ended conversations to hear what was on people's minds. Here's a summary of what I've heard. Question number one was, "From your perspective, what are the three most important things I should know about our school district?" And I did my very best to generalize and summarize and aggregate what I heard from a lot of people in just a few statements. So overwhelmingly, I heard over and over and over again, "This is a special place." Uh, "We have a great district comprised of unique schools and communities. The diversity of our in-town and our rural communities is our strength. Our students are amazing, we have great things going, but some relationships have been strained in recent times." Number two, "What is the most important thing for me to accomplish this year?" I asked people. They said, "Build bridges, build trust, stabilize the district after the recent leadership changes, get to know everyone, ease anxiety, immerse yourself in work toward unity, support the strategic plan." Equity, equity was mentioned a couple of times and in different ways. Their question was, "Who are the most important people for me to get to know as I go about leading the district?" And I really ended up with a big list, so I didn't include my list, but it's, in general, people just, uh, they listed principals, teachers, board members, past board members, district office staff, Debbie Valoff was mentioned more than once. Union leaders, and, and of course, kids were mentioned too, so I appreciated that very much. A few specifically ever shared, and I will continue reaching out to others over the course of the year. And again, if you have somebody in mind you think I should spend some time with, send me their names, love to talk with them. Number four, I asked people, "What does equity mean in your work?" I heard equity talked about in many ways. Some described issues of access and opportunities as it relates to differences among schools. Others described equity in terms of providing that which students need to be successful. Some referenced underserved populations. In all responses, I heard a genuine desire to do the very best we can for every student and a, and a, and a commitment to make sure each and every student gets what they need to be successful. I understand that last spring, there was quite a bit of discussion in strategic visioning about the phrase "each and every." Is that right?
Yes.
Yeah. So, uh, I wanted to point out that, uh, I did my best to honor some of those conversations. Number five is, "What is unique about where you work that I should know?" Each person I spoke with had really positive things to say about their school and the district as a whole. Our smaller rural schools were valued as reflections of the local communities and were viewed as an asset. Every school was noted as the hub of the local community. One comment that stood out to me was, "Perhaps we don't celebrate our diversity enough." Uh, and I remember that conversation was specifically talking about the diversity of, of our schools and our communities, so I appreciated that. The middle school was noted for its unique facility challenges caused by the abandoned portion of the old school that happens to be in the middle of the middle school. I asked, I asked people, "What can I do to help you be successful in your work?" I was encouraged to empower staff and teachers with a positive work environment and to build unity. I was asked to spur the conversation around equity and to move the district forward in that work. I was also asked to be an objective voice about facilities and to keep an open door and to be available. I was asked to give clear direction and parameters to be honest and to not let people spin their wheels on committees if the outcome is predetermined. That was an interesting observation that I really appreciate, because it's really caused me to do a lot of thinking about some, some of how we, how we form and run our committees. "What can you do to help me be successful?" I asked people in my work. Each person with whom I spoke expressed a willingness and a strong commitment to be there for the district. Their strong support for the district and a desire to be a part of moving the district forward positively was clearly heard in people's heartfelt words. A lot of genuine comments I heard. This next question, I, it was sort of a gut, gut check, but I, it was a fill-in-the-blank. And responses generally reflected some forms of a common desire for our district to heal so that students could thrive. First, if our district would just heal, students would thrive, that's how they filled in the blanks. Equity again was brought up by a couple of respondents as an important part of the meeting the needs of all students and bringing people together. There was also encouragement for the district to keep up with what's been working well and producing, uh, what's been working well and producing high levels of student achievement. So I asked, asked finally, "What other ideas do you have that would help move the district forward?" And I got a lot of really interesting feedback on this one as well. I was encouraged to take the long view, to be patient, to keep listening. Some ideas like more professional development, more focus on equity, more focus, focus on the overall well-being and the whole child. By the way, not a single person mentioned anything about standardized tests. Uh, and more attention to.
Just have more of those.
Yeah. And, and more attention to the middle school facility resurfaced as conversations began to conclude. Overall, I heard people encouraged me to work to bring people together, to keep moving us forward, but not to move too fast with changes to what's worked well in the district. So finally, I just want to conclude by, I, I'd like to thank everyone who shared their thoughts or perspectives with me. Since mid-August, I will keep listening and learning and looking for ways to celebrate the uniqueness and diversity within our school district. I'm grateful to know that with such dedicated professional educators and a community that is so strongly committed to the success of our students, we will keep moving forward together.
So it's only been a month, man, right?
It's been impressive.
In, in some ways, I, I, I do, I do feel very connected to, to a lot of the people already and a lot of the issues and a lot of concerns, and so, yeah, it, it matters.
This is outstanding.
It, it hits here too.
It is.
Thank you so much for your.
So, this will also go on board book, and I'll share this with staffs as opportunities arise.
Great.
That's really great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
So now, um, I'm going to kick off a discussion about my proposed goals for this year. You probably haven't seen a format like this, um, so I, I hope that's okay.
I like it.
I did take a look at Mr. Blando's format of his goals, so I know this is starkly different. And so, let me just kind of share with you the process here. Throw it on the table tonight, I kind of talk a little bit through each one of these and then it just kind of sits there and I'll ask you for feedback and then I'll bring this back to the October regular session and hopefully that time will approve my goals.
Excellent.
Okay? So, I'm using this sort of this rubric, this highly problematic is red, at-risk requires substantial attention and green being on track means that I feel like comfortably that I'm going to make that with what I've seen so far. And you will note that there's a lot of X marks in the red as we go down in the end. I fully intend to be really honest and this, these are moving targets throughout the course of the year. Generally speaking though, as I get further on in the year, those X's ought to be moving towards the, towards the green. If they're not, I need to be talking with you really candidly about why I'm not going to meet that goal. Okay? So, communications and engagement is an important area. It is my goal to get 100 school board member site business by June 15th.
Yes.
Right now, we've got 13 of 100 done.
Okay. Those are all.
Most of those are lying. I will tell you that people, some of the positive comments and feedback from staff, they really appreciate seeing us out there. As Dan and I have been talking at staff meetings, the biggest applause we got was when we referenced this and they really loved, they really did, Jeffrey likes to see us out there.
Well, and I just want to say, I really appreciate that you're pushing this. I probably can't go on the dates that you select, I might have to, I have very limited times when I can come, but in the past, like I've just decided, well, I'm going to go to the high school and I, you know, talk to the people that I need to talk to when I go, but I really like a more standardized approach where we're not all doing our own thing that you are leading us through, so I really appreciate that.
Yes, there is a sign-up sheet going around. Please sign up and send us other dates. We're totally flexible on that. We'll make it work for your scheduling. And if we can go, if we can go in groups of two or three, just not four.
And that counts if there's three of us and we go to?
If three of us go to one school, that counts as three.
Okay, there you go.
I just want to say that the visitations that I've had have not only been enlightening for me, but because I'm with Mr. Peterson, I can ask questions and I can learn. And I'm seeing a lot of things as a board member that will be in front of us very soon. And the students fantastic, the teachers just do dynamic things and the principals are out and about and they're engaging with their students and I'm learning a lot about facilities and I'm learning a lot about other things. And I had no idea that this wonderful middle school, the facade's there, but it's the mother. It's the mother of the heating, of the phones, of the electricity, so you can't remove it because then you'd have to have a plan to have the rest of it. And so, I was learning things like this and I thought, wow, wow. And it's, it's just amazing what's going on in our district. And I have to, hats off to, is it Brett Davidson? That was, boy, he's doing a fantastic job. He really, outstanding. But thank you, it's been great.
And if we do these comfortable shoes, I'm probably going to put on tennis shoes because we're going to put, we're going to be moving. I wore my dress shoes when they, I went home that day, I was hurting. So, enough on that. Next one is 20 board updates. I've been sending you one every Friday. I'm not sure if I can keep up that pace. I really enjoy those, but I would imagine there's going to be some weeks where I may be out of the office for two, three days and I just don't have time to get to it. So, I set a target for myself of 20 over the course of the year, so I feel really good. I've already got six done. I will keep shooting for every Friday, but the time will come and I just can't quite make it, so I hope that's okay. I'm trying to tweet. I'm spending less time on Facebook. In fact, when it comes to my professional life, I spend zero time on Facebook looking at what people are talking about. I'm trying to create some more positive space over in Twitter. And there's a lot of stuff that happens on Facebook that I just don't need to know about. Like I just, I don't attend every cocktail partying down either. So, some positive space on Twitter with some communications. And it doesn't have to all be positive. Today, I pushed out on my Twitter about the Victor Point water issue, but I think that's a great, empty, not empty, it's a great space that isn't being utilized a whole bunch in our, in our community right now is Twitter, so it's an opportunity.
And he usually puts in a great photo to accompany his message, so it's.
Yes, that's great, yes.
I only have 24 followers at this point, so.
I've never even.
I don't even know what Twitter is.
No, I do, but I just don't have it. I never installed it or anything.
And you know what? I think that's, that's actually a really good thing. So, all right, newsletters. I just have brought up this topic here in the last couple of days. I don't have a budget identified for it yet, but I would like to put out three and I'm talking good old-fashioned, hard copies, stick them in the postal to go to all patrons of some sort. Either through that or the our town where we insert. So, at least kind of three good quality newsletters.
Right, very good.
Can I ask a question about communications engagement? I'm guessing that there's a lot of engagement and communication happening with staff and admin, principals and all of that that isn't, of course, is not reflected here. That this is, how would you characterize this? This is sort of your, or your PR type of stuff to keep out in the community.
A lot of these are my stretch things that I intentionally, these are things that I want to do that if I don't kind of stretch myself, I won't do.
Because they're not necessarily a part of your day-to-day and so you kind of put them out there as bigger goals.
Yeah, I mean, there's nowhere in Division 22 that says a superintendent should tweet. But I think it's important and communicate like that. Yeah, these are, these are things that all stretch me and I, and I think that's good for me and, you know, just like when you're setting and go for yourself, what do you tell other people about it? It helps build some accountability into your own psychological process. Number two is the implementation of the strategic plan, establishing the baseline data and measure block because by November 12th, we've already started some work. I feel really good about that, that work that's underway. I find that really exciting. Jennifer Hannan is going to be a really key player in this. We've got some good partner with Kate Patterson advising us as well, so I feel good about that. We're going to develop a dashboard on our website that is a glimpse into our strategic planning work, a bunch of those metrics and key performance indicators. So, Derek will be doing that work. We've already, I've already shown him some examples of some things that I'm looking for and he's going to work on that. He'll have a kind of a short timeline to push the first one out, but I want it online by November 21st.
Excellent.
And then the three board updates, we will, I will do, Jennifer and I will do a presentation to the, for the board at three, three public meetings at the November, February, and May work sessions. That's where we'll report to you, here's how we're doing. And this likelihood of successful brick, we're going to be using that same construct for, to tell you how we're doing. And think about that, especially as we get into the February one and I said, look, our likelihood of success on this goal area of the district is so low because we need to get some resources. And what have I done there? I've just planted a seed for the budgets, budget committee's work that begins the following month.
Fantastic.
And so, strategic plan, we're going to do our bare best what we have and then if we need resources, then we talk about, through the budget creative process, reallocating and re-appropriating resources for our plan to work. Strategic plan report to the budget committee. I also plan on actually doing an update for the actual budget committee themselves and do that in March. That'll be one of our kickoff things with the budget committee. And then goal three of the strategic plan, and by the way, I'm going to pause here for a quick second and let you know that I communicated to all the principals that they each need to have a goal that is in direct support of the strategic plan, so I'm modeling that same thing as well. Goal three of the strategic plan is that each school facility reflects the excellence of education in our district. So, one of the first things I'm going to do, and this is probably news to all of you, is, is I'm going to conduct a poll, a public poll. You know how when you get to a bond measure and you've got a plan and you want to test that on your committee, so you do a phone poll of your, of your community, see all that, see what your community thinks? I want to do that, but now. Not to test it planned, but I want to see, what do people know and think? I want to, I want to know of all of our, of our, the 70% of our community who has zero attachment to our schools, that don't have kids in school, that don't have neighbors in, that don't have grandkids in school, 70% has no attachment. We need to find out what they think about our facilities. What do they think about our schools? So, it's a community perception survey. It's the same sort of thing as you would, where you test a plan later on, but well, I want to find out what people know now. And Lori, thank you for sharing that, that experience you had of, I didn't know about this, this thing in the middle of our middle school called the Little Ankle. I need to know how many people know that. Before we, before I get into kicking off long-range facilities planning with a big group of people, I need to kind of know what's off limits.
Okay.
I need to build, remember one of the things I heard in the listing sessions was, give people the parameters so they don't spin their wheels? There are some things that when we kick off of Long Range Facilities Planning, I need to from day one say, look, we're not going to talk about the following. And I'll give you just an example. We're not putting a bond measure out on the ballot next November, period. It ain't happening. It can't happen. I mean, it could, but it would be crazy.
Yeah.
It's too soon. So, I need to give people some parameters. And so, getting, getting a good, getting a good perception survey data from our community will help inform what is even in the realm of possibility for a potential bond measure two years, three years, five years, 10 years down the road.
Yeah, that's great, fantastic.
By the way, I've all, I've already talked with some of the key people that have worked on Silver Falls Bond Measures and polling in the past. And I've got a ton of data coming at me right now from those people.
Wow.
So, great. In fact, that's what I said, who are the, who are the smartest people I know in the state on this? I called them and they said, oh yeah, I worked with Silver Falls a few years ago. Great, send me what you got. And they were glad to oblige. All right, so there's the survey. I'm going to continue doing my homework. I've got to study the demographics report, the facilities report, our debt payoff and our bonding capacity. I also need to look at kind of just everything that's been done in the past so I can, before I walk into a kickoff meeting with Long Range Facilities Planning, that I don't introduce things that have already been beat into the ground or dismissed or what have you. I need to define the scope of work for our consultant facilitator by mid-October and I hire, so that we hire a consultant or facilitator to guide that. It won't be me facilitating those meetings. I will be driving it, but it'll be somebody who's an expert at facilitation for long-range planning. I don't know who worked with them past, but there are people that specialize in just that.
I don't remember their name, but this, that is the process we followed in the past as well.
Good. So, first thing, or one of the things I need to do is establish their scope of work. Is it five meetings over six months? Is it 15 meetings over two years? I need to start narrowing down what is that scope of work because that has budget implications in how we put out our requests for proposals.
Right.
I'll be working on that. I do intend to expand the Long Range Facilities Planning Committee in a pretty big way. I will be talking with you, asking you for names of people that could, that can help. We've got, we've got, already have a great list of people, but we're going to, we need to expand, especially if we are seriously thinking about a bond measure in two, three, four, five years. We'll need to start getting our information out there, getting the facts about what we have into the hands of more people. And again, working with some survey data on the front end will really inform what facts are most relevant to the work that we want to get accomplished. And then a kickoff meeting in November, I think there are people who are anxious and waiting for me to call the, call the meeting. I'm not ready to do that until probably November, so I want to have some parameters established too, and I just think I've explained a little bit about that now. And then meetings held throughout the year is determined in the scope of the work in October. Number four is goal area on strengthening licensed evaluation systems and practices. Mr. Bush will also have some, some goals that he's working on in this area because it's something that's near and dear to both of us. And I, one of my goals will be to have, make sure that we have 100% of our licensed evals completed on time by June 30th. That sounds like a no-brainer.
Wow.
Jeez.
But it's a pretty, that's a pretty ambitious goal.
That's a very ambitious goal.
Yeah, it's, that will take some really intentional work, high expectations. I will probably be supervising all of the principals in terms of their evaluation. This is an area that they'll get to hear from me as an expectation, okay? Also, I want to improve the quality of feedback. And this last one is probably the one that needs the most, I'm still developing how I want to do this, but Dan and I started talking about it today. Improving the quality of feedback that licensed professionals are receiving from their supervisor. So, we're talking about maybe doing a survey, asking, finding out what kind of feedback are you getting on your evaluation? Is it, hey, you did a great job and I enjoyed being in your classroom? Or I noticed that you asked five questions and on the first three, you had 20 hands up and you had, you only asked, called upon the same three students in the following two questions. It's that kind of feedback. There's a, there's a big difference. What's going to, what's going to be important and impactful on student learning?
Absolutely.
It's got to be beyond, enjoyed being in your classroom today, great job.
Yeah, right.
That's important too, but it's not enough.
It's not enough.
Right. Okay. So, part of that was, at the end of the year, at the closeout, we'll be doing, I think I'd use the phrase of sort of a soft audit of looking through those and giving the principals feedback on here's what we saw when we looked at evaluations you did of your people. Those are my goals. I would invite you to give me feedback now or via email and I'll send you feedback on how do you want me to present this at the October session? Do you want me to go through like I just did here or?
I think that would be.
Yeah, that's fine.
That's just fine.
I really like the traffic light colors. I think I'm going to start, I'm going to start using that.
Very good.
And I intend to be really honest with you. We may get to the end of the year and have some things in the red.
Yeah, that's okay. That's okay.
That's part of the process. And that's how we keep growing from year over year over year.
Right. And I just wanted to confirm, you have done long-range facilities work before, is that right?
Yes.
Yeah, so.
Thank you.
So, even though you say like, oh, people expected me to start in October, but I'm not going to be able to do that to November, you understand what the process is and feel okay with that.
We passed the first bond measurements cap boost in 40 years.
Yeah.
Finished all of our projects on time and under budget. Money left over, picked off a few more deferred maintenance items.
That's what I remembered, thank you.
I'm very happy to hear about that, about the long range facilities.
But it was, it was a big process.
Yeah, it is.
You're talking 60, 80 people in the room.
Yeah.
The magic of what, my experience, they're in a scapless, the magic was, even though everybody came into the room on day one, they knew what we were going to do. They had the plan worked out. They talked to their friends. We're going to do this, or we're going to build a high school, we're going to do this, we're going to get a turf field over here, we're going, people walked in. And after, I don't know, 13 months of going through this process, the plan we came out with, not a single person can claim that that was their idea. It was truly a reflection of that process and the people. And that was powerful. I will never forget when the athletic director in this packed room where people are just boring down, they're so tired of this. You know that, that feeling you had when you debated each and every words? And you're just like, ah, and you're, and you're doing this, and the athletic director stands up and very quietly says, I have something for almost all the kids. About 75% of our kids are involved in some sport that are somehow responsible for. He says, you know what? I don't have anything for the kids who are looking for theater. And from that moment, from that moment on, we were getting an auditorium. And that's now the crown jewel of the scapless schools.
Wow, cool.
And if you get these moments from being engaged over time with people in this process, as long as it's facilitated as well, again, I really believe it has to start with really solid homework. And, because I guarantee you, somebody's going to walk in on day one and say, we're getting a turf field! And they have talked to everyone they know. And the reality is that even when we add up everybody we know, doesn't even begin to approach the 70% of the population who are, who are going to cast votes someday in the future on a bond measure. So, yep.
Very good.
Thank you for that.
Thank you for this.
Thank you.
May I ask a chair, would it be okay? I would love you to invite our assistant superintendent, if there's anything you want to share with the board this evening since you've stayed.
No, thank you Janet for that. Now, just been, you know, the first few weeks, I tried to set the goal of starting, starting my day in a building and getting out there and avoiding an office and email that will suck the life right out of me. So, I will just be honest that the last week or so has been a little bit tougher to do that of having to schedule some meetings first thing of the day, and so it's been a little bit tougher lately. But been going out with Paul and doing, and you know, we just tag-team it. You know, he talks a little bit about this and I talk about labor management that we've started and overall has been very well-received and, and so, you know, gearing up, we have negotiations tomorrow night, so that's going. We've got the roles and responsibilities training on Wednesday night, which is, is the result of the settlement, the ULP. And that's been a really productive process. So, that's from four to six at Silverton High School, so all building principals and all building reps will get a joint presentation. So all building principals and all building reps will get a joint presentation from Brian Hungerford, who represents school districts, represents our school district, and a gentleman named Adam Arms, who I've not met, I've talked to him over the phone. He is kind of the top OEA legal counsel. So what we did is we had a joint phone call with those two and we, this is Michelle and I, gave kinda like, here's, here's our vision of what we'd like this to be. So three agenda items. So one is kind of what are the labor practices? And will you wanna use terms like unfair labor practice? What does that even mean? Or public employees.
Collective bargaining.
Yeah. So a little, just a little bit of content and then analyzing about five articles of our bargaining agreement, trying to come up with some scenarios like, okay, so if this happens, how does our contract play out? How's it supposed to work? And then the last one is, where have you seen, what do school districts, building principals, what do they do to keep healthy relationships going? So those are our three topics. You know, it's kinda, and working with these two attorneys, it's, it'll be kinda interesting because we've both kinda coached them to kinda like, so like, it's like, Adam, you tell the association how they're supposed to play nice in the sandbox and then Brian, you tell the principals how they're supposed, you know. So it's not Brian wagging his finger at the association or vice versa. It's going to be more of like, you know, here's things that association you can do to promote, you know, promote a healthy culture. Principals, here's what you can do to promote a healthy culture. So. So I'm really excited for that. Because I think with that, and if we could get bargaining going, I think we could really be in a really sweet spot by winter break.
And Jonathan's gonna be there tomorrow.
Yeah.
That said, bargaining will probably be going on for a while. Yeah. It doesn't, doesn't appear that. Yeah. More of that later.
Yeah.
Well, one of the things that I was gonna point out, I didn't see anything about bargaining on here as a goal, but it sure seemed to me like getting that worked out's gotta be one of our top priorities.
Oh, it is, yeah. Absolutely.
That's planned to be done.
Yeah. We want, we want nothing more than a timely and fair contract to be reached.
Yeah, but some of these relate to some of the issues.
They do. In particular, these.
Evaluation things.
Right, absolutely.
I just, that's something that as this process is unfolding, there's a lot of complex dynamics, I think, at play. Everything from everything that transpired over the last three or four months to sort of statewide, you know, inertia on a few issues.
I think so.
And I think, I think it'd be really unfortunate if we somehow get caught up in some kind of a really ugly problem scenario. And I personally wanna make sure we're doing everything we can to try and avoid that.
Yeah, and I guess I didn't see, and I'm sure it's reflected elsewhere, but all of the SSA and the school improvement plans and all of that whole thing, that whole machine that has to roll out. And I guess that too, sort of consistent with your point, is where would some of those kind of more nitty-gritty, boring-in-the-weeds kinds of goals be reflected? Is that just sort of your day-to-day?
Of course, the normal duties.
You wake up and you wonder whether they are, sort of thing.
Yeah. I mean, you won't see, I thought long and hard about putting some equity-focused work on here as well. But I think there's, there's a lot of other things that you might read about in my agenda plan that are, that are kinda indicative of who I am and how I lead that don't necessarily let themselves to writing a goal about. But yeah, things like Division Twenty-Two, selling our contracts and, you know, like I said, yeah, the Student Success Act, High School Success Program. Those are all in the course of normal duties, things that I do. I don't necessarily need goals around those to kinda stretch me because I've got plenty of other pressures stretching me to get those done too. But I can certainly write some if you'd like, if you'd like to see some, see a goal. I mean, that's okay too.
I think it's more just having, that if this becomes a public document, that these are your goals. That I wonder if it's helpful to sort of differentiate between goals that you have personally, goals that are, as you said, stretch goals, and then goals that the district really is able to articulate as we know that these are priorities for the coming year. And we wanna make sure that you know, that you, being the community, know that we know that they're priorities. So whether it's equity work or, I would hate to see somebody look at this and go, well, where are all of these?
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought about the SFOM request. I thought about the collective bargaining and the student success. Those were the three things that sort of popped onto my mind.
Oh, those sound like board goals, y'all.
Actually, I was just gonna mention with you.
And if you have board goals, that becomes my work.
We also have board goals that we need to look at, you know, and talk about. So he's got his goals, you know, Dan has his, but we also have board goals that we need to make sure that, you know.
I can't even remember what we're gonna do.
I don't either. There's been so much, so much on our plate right now that I can't remember.
Ideally, you would do those early in the spring so that they get into the budget.
We did, yeah. But I'd still like to take a look at them again because we do have a few new board members that I thought it might be.
I'll send them to everybody tomorrow.
That'd be great, yeah.
Can you make sure I'm on that too, please?
Yep. Yep.
And I would think it's, you know, if there's some modifications that need to be made just because there's so much that has happened since we last spoke.
I don't think that's out of bounds. I mean, I think if you need to make changes to those goals and make changes at all.
Right, that we could potentially support other things than, you know. Yeah.
One thing I've been wondering about is our consultant for the strategic plan, what's his name?
Jake Longley.
Jerry. He said several times that, you know, it's wise to focus in on some of the strategic plan and not try to do it all at once. And I'm wondering if we do have a board goal kind of discussion that maybe we identify something from there that might be the highlight.
Yeah.
Be a great topic for next week when Renee's here too.
Now, now, this is another question. So, but part of our work with Renee is coming up with the board superintendent working agreement, right?
I think that is on the list.
It's on, there are like ten things on the list.
Okay, but that's gotta be a priority because we, we were supposed to do it last time and ran out of time.
It's on the list.
And we don't have one currently. Like, one of the questions that I have is like, the reports that you send us, is that information just for us? Can we publicize it? I mean, what is the, and that's usually part of the working agreement, but I wanted to ask you about that.
Thank you. I intend those just for you.
Okay.
Of course, anything I send you as a public, but I would say, if there's something in there that you wanna copy and paste, and in fact, Lori did that one time. If she had something, a little nugget she wanted like fun on her Facebook, just shoot me a note and say, and ask me if that's fine.
Is that okay?
Yeah. But yeah, I think in my very first one of the ones I wrote to you, I said, I intend this for, just for you. I'm also careful, I don't put, you know, things about personnel in those knowing that. Yeah. I don't, I don't know what you're accustomed to with what we had in the past. What was?
What was it, different tenor?
Yeah, well, they've always been confidential.
That's right.
Intended, but it's a public document. If it was, if it was meant to be for everybody, you would use a different tone. I mean, it would just be different.
Right. The type of information you're sharing, I would say is different substantively than what I was used to receiving from our previous superintendent.
Okay.
That's not bad, and it's just, they're different.
They're different?
Yeah.
What would you, what would you like? Can it give you a flavor for?
What you've been doing is fine.
Would you be different?
Oh, I like it.
I really like what you're doing.
I think it's informative and it's.
I mean, if we have questions, we'll ask them.
Yeah. No, I like what you're doing.
Okay.
I mean, I think before it was more, like.
Waterfall.
Yeah.
That's the word I was asking.
Right, okay, yeah, that's a good word, waterfall, right.
Waterfall?
And then.
All right, maybe that's another word I use at work.
Another thing we use at work.
Sorry. Okay.
Yeah.
Very.
That's good.
Information cascading down from above.
Okay.
That's sort of how it was.
Right.
Okay.
But, but I like what's going on right now, being so new and not knowing what happened before. I really appreciate. It's, it's got a really nice feel and flow to it. It's, and it's very interesting, intriguing, and I find it just so encouraging about what we're doing with the district.
And I make no apologies, that I do try to be more positive in those. Just because I believe the work for our district, that, you know, that will be bringing us together, requires us to focus on the positive things and be looking for the positive things in our world around us and sharing those and celebrating those. So, yeah, I don't really apologize. If I have things that aren't as upbeat or as uplifting, yeah, I'll find other ways to communicate to you. Did I send you something today about the water?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I'll tend to do that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Kinda on an as units basis, but.
Yeah, I think your updates are candid.
Okay.
I think they're, they're great. They're informative and you have multiple different topics and I like them.
And when we talk about board goals too, I think it's also good to know what's important to the individual boards. And as you know, Jonathan and Paul, I cheat like a little bird, cheap, cheap. This is important, this is important, where does it show up, you know? And so if that's okay, where I chirp or cheat or whatever, then I'll continue to do so. Because I know that there's always kind of that ebb and flow where it's going to land before it can be fully discussed. But yeah, if that's acceptable for a board member to do, I'll just, no.
No, you're, send us.
Okay, good.
Whatever's on your mind, I encourage everybody to do that.
You can do that.
That's why you were elected.
But not long as it's not, yeah, I just, long as it's done professionally. I mean, you know, it's well, you know, but yeah.
And then you would've invited us to send you sort of the big list, like just kind of dumb, everything that's on the line. And then we'll try to start sifting through those and allocate them in the months that they seem to be logically random. Make sure that we, the food door can cover.
Good, I'll continue to.
Before every board meeting.
Oh, yeah.
And one of the things that we do is we're gonna look at that sort of backlog list. What are the items that we haven't gotten to yet that are coming up? There's also, you know, thank you, Debbie, for, you know, here's kind of the things we do this month normally. So we all make sure to, to follow up with the regulars.
Oh, I know.
Of course, there is a board.
I know.
So, but yeah, and by all means, every time you think of something, you know, we need to make sure we don't forget about. I'll put it right on the list.
Okay.
And it'll come up when we talk about it.
What, how, how, how much before, how long before the meetings do you guys try to develop that agenda? Just in terms of making sure that we can be timely in giving you things that we feel like, oh, would you consider putting this on the agenda because I think it's really timely? When, when would it, sort of time for that?
Being discussed in cabinet on Monday mornings.
Oh, okay.
And then, of course, we're going back to board book, you know, going back to our last year's agenda to make sure we're covering all of our housekeeping items.
Housekeeping, right, yeah, because it'll count for that, yeah.
Yep.
But basically by Wednesday, we won't have it locked down.
Yeah, by Wednesday morning, I pretty much know what it is. And, but I, it's.
And that's when you get it together and put it out.
I get it together, but I hold on to it to make sure that there's no additional revision.
Right. Because we get a chance to meet first.
Yes.
Nice.
Okay, so once, once superintendent and board chair.
Then it can be.
And then I hit send. As soon as they're done, to make sure that I, you know, that things didn't miss or.
So getting something to you the Friday before that cabinet meeting.
Yeah, I mean, ideally, ideally, if you know something's important, as soon as you know it's sent, then you're getting it.
Sure, okay, don't necessarily try to.
And I, and I actually keep a list that's kind of months looking out. So I'll say, you know what? That's gonna be good for January.
Yeah.
It'll just park it down there.
Same, right? So we just reconcile those, make sure we're on the same page.
I know, it's got like a grocery list, a running grocery list going. I did wanna bring up two things. Could we get that list from the last, it was the, this past season of Budget Committee meetings? And we had a lot of things put in the parking lot. A lot of topics, a lot of such, the parking lot.
Yes, yes, yes. Yes, I remember the parking lot talk.
Yeah.
It was at the, yes.
It was the, yeah, would, you know, there were some questions, it was in the budget meetings. Yeah, the budget meetings were there, and there were topics in the parking lots. I think there were quite a few topics in there that are really important that we, I'd like to see it again and bring them up.
Roundup was one of the topics.
Right, Charles?
Roundup.
That, that is, that's a hot topic, I think. I think that's something that we.
Yeah, just, just, I think it's a hot topic, let's just put it that way. I don't know what we're gonna do with it, but it is a hot topic.
I might have shared this before, but I did extend a concern or an email to Lawrence Stanley. And he talked very openly about it. And I, and I think he's planning to discuss it more. I guess he's gonna be coming up soon and sharing an IPM. And that is, it is a hot topic, it is an issue of concern. And he has it, he's got that information in place. So it'll be good to hear from him.
It's good to know that he knows that that's on the radar.
Yeah.
Speaking of Renee, by the way, we have a survey, right? That we're supposed to do, is that still open? Because I haven't done it.
It is.
It's good, just because, yeah, I think I did mine either. I hope I did mine.
What? I'm listening.
Did you hear, is yours done?
We refuse to do it, it's very informative and fun.
The, the survey? All right. I worked really hard on mine last year. I just haven't gotten to it yet.
There's just one more thing I wanted to mention now that we're talking about, just kind of, you know, bringing up topics. The one thing that I'm not very fond of is that everything that's, that could be presented to us as a board is like a shiny new toy. That everything's good, everything's smooth, everything is going well, our numbers are up, da-da-da-da-da. I can get all that good information and that's good to know, but I'd like to hear the challenges too. I'd like to hear what challenges are happening. I feel like I, and this is my opinion, it can be, you know, construed however you want, but I do feel like that it was, you know, information that was presented since I've been on this board was just good information, it was just all good. And, you know, I would ask questions about certain things and, you know, tough questions. But I think that it's healthy and for transparency and for thorough information to bring up challenges too, because there are. And we need to talk about them. And if we don't talk about them, we're gonna end up in the same place that we were. And so that's, that's one thing I wanted to bring up with this new, you know, with our new superintendent, our new assistant superintendent, with the rest of the board members. You know, I just don't wanna hear all the good stuff.
Yeah.
I wanna hear the challenge stuff.
Come, come talk to us.
Healthy, healthy stuff, healthy discussions.
The, that's a great, it's a great question and I appreciate that. But ninety percent of our challenges involve people.
Oh, okay.
And so that's what, probably a big reason why we don't talk about it in public. Because we're protecting people and their privacy.
Oh, I see.
Come sit down with Dan and we'll tell you about some of the.
It can be facilities, it can be anything that's non, you know, executive session situation, right? I suppose, you know what I mean? I think it's a feeling, you don't need to feel like you need to keep your board happy or that you need to be somehow wild or like smoothed over, anything like that.
Oh, good.
Don't, we're here to, we're here to work these burger bees. We're here to maybe do the work.
But you know, I know that as I've been visiting the schools, all of them except you, but I, I've learned a lot of things. And, and, and so for me, that, you know, and to have you there as well, hearing this and knowing it, it, it gives you insight on what is being dealt with and what's being acknowledged. And, and I can honestly say, you know, the principals were incredibly.
Open with us?
Very friendly, candid. Oh, yeah. Yeah, I felt that. I mean, I, I thought it was really healthy. And so what you're talking about, I think, it, it, it exists in communication, in people sharing and the needs that are to, to really facilitate and have a very well-balanced and well-organized flow in our district. I think there's a lot of things being shared.
Call me anytime.
Yeah, exactly.
Sounds great. Very good.
Yeah, and I would just add to that, just, you know, it's, you know, because, you know, Yeah, and I would, I would just add to that, just, you know, is, you know, because, you know, my heart rate started as you were talking there. Just partly, cause, I mean, they are just, you know, mostly people related, yeah.
Mostly personnel.
Oh, okay, okay.
And so, if you are hearing something that causes you any kind of concern, or, or, you know, set up a, a time to talk over the phone, or if you're hearing something, I might be able to explain a little bit about what's happening and those sorts of things. But, yeah, most of it would be problematic to, to.
Got it, okay.
Yeah, you know.
Well, I like how Janet said, you don't always have to come here and please us, you know, to plea, you know what I mean? I loved her response.
Sure.
That's basically what I was trying to say, is you don't have to come here and just please us all the time.
That's right.
Tell us what's going on.
Scores can't always go like that.
Yeah, right, right. Well, true, so true, yeah. So, love it.
I'm just gonna step all over that, and, and I don't mean to, because I, I meant to ask this during this. I, I clicked on the Oregonian about four, five, eight days ago, and saw that the Oregon, state of Oregon had the worst test scores in five years. And I went, oh boy, and I clicked, and I searched for ours, yeah, the state.
Okay.
And I, so I'm gonna take a deep breath, and I click on ours, and I see that ours have gone up.
Right.
Yeah.
So I do wanna hear a lot. I wanna hear about a bunch, but, 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 I mean, but in, in seriousness, I, I wanna, there, there's, you know, we're facing, yeah, we're, um, I wanna know what we're doing that the other schools aren't. I mean, if, 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 if it was reversed, if ours were going down and everybody else was going up, I wanna know.
Yeah.
But I also wanna know what we're, we're doing something right here.
Right.
And, and I would like, you know, permission to blow your horn, permission to your horn, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and to follow up on that too, and back to Ben, I talk about Ben all the time.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, but the, the guy, Phil Gore, he, he's the one, the book you read, talked about the research on what makes effective boards.
Yes, yes, right.
It's when the board can see the results of an investment or a decision,
Right.
that feedback helps us be more effective, so.
Exactly, right, right.
Yeah, I, I wanna, yeah, I mean, it was, I was like, wow. But, I mean, I'd say, I looked into the numbers a bit, and there's buildings in the district and other things, but, but as, as a rule, and you, you, uh, you touched on that in, in your last update, that things.
And that, that's a balance of the good things that they need to work on.
I'm sure, I'm, I'm sure, I'm sure we'll be heavier about that.
Oh, yeah.
And it's, it's a great book, it's.
I don't, I don't need to be snowed either, I, I mean, if they're not all in the green, I'm, I'm okay.
Right. Yeah.
It's honest, right, I want honest, yeah.
I just want some honesty, yeah, I just, yeah, I highly recommend everyone read that book.
And I think you'll get some of that, because I think, you know, and I, I appreciate Paul's model on this, because I, I do think, you know, modeling that it's okay to be in the red is a place to start and, and whatnot.
Yeah.
Think you'll find in those, the two that I'm kind of be focusing there on the end, you know, we'll, we'll have some areas at the end of the year where we'll talk about, you know, how we evaluate administrative feedback or whatnot, that'll probably be, like, here, here's a place to start from. So, it won't be a, a glossy, we're, we're awesome in all areas.
Great.
But, you know, trying to really, because it is about feedback, when you can say, we invested this, and here's the outcome, or here's the miss.
Right. Right. Yes. Right.
That's how you get better, and so that's, that is, you know, a goal for, for us.
Right.
So I think you'll get some of that.
Right.
And our administrators need, need to know that it's safe to do that.
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yes.
Absolutely.
I think that issue of safety right now is clearly on some of their minds.
Yes. Yes.
For, for what has been, uh, experienced in, in recent times.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, it's gonna take some time, this heal, notion of healing, it goes, it hits everybody.
Yeah.
Including some of our, our administrators and principals, who aren't reticent right now to take chances.
Yeah. Oh, very good, yeah. Very good, thank you, Bob, thank you for the discussion, yeah.
Excellent.
Okay, anything, I don't know.
Did Irv, do you wanna talk?
He said perfect.
Yeah. Oh, no.
Okay, we heard you, and so I just thought you might want, we're trying to butt into the conversation.
Oh, no.
Okay.
So you're gonna, you're gonna choose that October meeting, affirm?
Yes.
Is, is anybody checking references on these, or is it gonna be a discussion in October?
They're all good.
I can check references if you'd like.
They're all good.
Wow. Is that something that, that needs to be done?
If Shelley wants to do it, I'm happy to hear from what her report.
Yeah.
I am too, I don't think I would be able to, to, in all sincerity, so I don't think I could sign up.
I can do it, I can finish the, the task, yeah.
Thank you.
I'll just follow through and finish it, yeah.
And now, could that be a report, this just via email, would that be okay?
I was just gonna ask that, would you mind if I just email that to you guys?
Send, send it to us.
Just send it to everybody?
Yes, okay, and you can.
Individually, and then we'll, and then Debbie will send it out to all of us.
Oh, excellent, okay.
Right, okay, yeah, yeah. Or, no, cause it'll only be home from work, so we won't have to worry about that.
No, right.
Yeah, so I'll just get some references, and, cause all of them have different kinds, and I'll just do the best I can and, um, send it to you. That'd be great, so you have the process that.
Yeah.
So, no problem. Due diligence, really good, thank you. Yeah.
Great.
All right then.
Be good.
All right.